Order. Yeah, sorry.
And at six thirty-one, we'll call the Union Twenty-Six to order.
All right. So our first matter of business is an update from the Superintendent Search Committee. Now I think we have a memo. Um, what? Perfect. Thanks Jennifer.
Sure. So, the Superintendent Search Subcommittee met on October twenty-fifth and we finalized the RFP for the search consultant for the superintendent position. And we took into account, we got feedback from one other regional school committee member and we took that into account. And so we, since the, since at our, at the last meeting of these two bodies, the SSS was empowered to write the RFP, we then asked the interim superintendent to post the RFP on the Goods and Services Bulletin, which is the state website for RFPs. And Dr. Slaughter informed us that, had previously informed us that there's a weekly Wednesday deadline for publishing the following Monday. So Doug published the RFP, or sorry, posted the RFP last week and it's going to be published as it, what day is today? Today? What, this week?
Next Monday.
Next Monday, sorry, my brain dates. So it should be published by November sixth. We indicated a deadline of November seventeenth for submission. So that's two full work weeks for firms to submit their bid. And then the SSS has a meeting for November twentieth to, at which point we will, we will individually have reviewed the bids and we will come together as a subcommittee to review the bids and come to these two bodies to recommend one or more search firms at this body's November twenty-eighth meeting. So...
I just need to update you on a small piece of information. So, having posted it early is a good thing because then the, the state reviewed the, the posting for details and whatnot. And what they noticed was that if you do that kind of posting, you have to have that request for proposal for a full two weeks. So they don't count workdays, they count full work. So we had to move the, the due date to the twentieth at five P.M. So literally at five oh one, you guys are going to, you know, have all this stuff and be able to start reviewing. So if, if you were planning on meeting before five o'clock on Monday, the twentieth, you'll have to push to five, but that's the only sort of constraint. But I did want to update you on that and, and let you know that.
Great. Thank you for that. We will make do, I think. We'll, I hope. So if anyone wants to see the RFP, it's very similar to what was shared with the committees previously, the, the link is in the memo. And then this pushes us a little bit later than we had originally planned, but I think we're still going to be on track to ultimately have a permanent superintendent in place by July four, uh, July first. So there's a revised master timeline, which is, is at that link. So basically, like the subcommittee's focus became the RFP and focusing on getting that out the door. On a parallel track, now that that's published, or now that it will be published, we plan to review the text of the, a draft of the text of the job posting for the position, which we plan to present to you all at the November fourteenth meeting for this, for these bodies to vote to approve. Sorry, no, we're going to present it to you at the November, at the November fourteenth meeting for you to review and give us input. And then we're going to plan to finalize it at the November twenty-eighth meeting. So it will have two meetings at which to review the job posting because it's important. We want to make sure that we get, get everyone's input and, and get it as right as we can. At the same time, we're also going to be working on the interest form for the search committee and the outreach plan to notify community members and school community members about the search committee and that they can submit in the interest form. That we do plan to bring to you for approving at the November fourteenth meeting. Do any subcommittee members have anything to add? I think that's it.
Well, thank you. That looks like you guys did a lot of work.
Yeah, I was waiting for general comments. And you just mentioned on your subcommittee comments. Are you taking comments from us?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. There, uh, you mentioned Jennifer, that there were a person or a committee member or not a committee member, a school committee member had concerns that was made about the process. And so I sent this to the Regional School Committee and I just wanted to make sure it's part of the record. I am writing to create awareness that the superintendent search process has prioritized expediency at the cost of creating a diverse superintendent search. In the last meeting, the SSS went over their search process for a search firm. It basically, basically consisted of referral and seeking out information from other districts or firms that had conducted previous searches. Missing was an almost complete lack of information on these firms' policies, practices, and procedure regarding matters, matters of diversity, equity, and inclusion practices. Only one firm recommended had a DEI statement. The, the discussion around the possible need for an RFP was particularly distressing because it would prevent a wider search for a superintendent position. There was no mention of any effort to contact Black or African-American Superintendent Association, Latino Superintendent Association, women-owned or minority-owned search firms. If we are to live up to our values and policies, mainly policies A, C, B, and A, C, D, and our stated values of diversity, equity, and inclusion, then we would be demonstrating this in our words and action. The current process falls short of this as far as looking for search firms goes. I want to see a level playing field so that all firms available to search are given an equal opportunity to do so. Now, I do commend the SSS for at least taking my concerns into consideration and changing tack and making those particular changes. But, but again, it's sort of like, as I was trying, wanted to say, it's very easy just to slip back into old patterns. We just, you know, slip back. And it is not that I want a BIPOC or, or, or a person of a different gender or, or color, race, ethnicity. I just want, wanted and want a level playing field that everyone has an equal opportunity to, to participate so that we get the strongest candidate pool possible.
Margaret?
I just wanted to say that after that last meeting, I did some, I went out and did some additional searching to, to look for search firms. And there just aren't that many out there. But what I realized, because one of the sites I went to was the National Alliance of Black School Educators. And they don't do searches, but we can advertise there.
Yes.
When it's time to actually have the job description out there and be, be soliciting. So I think, I think that's the piece that we really need to focus on, is to make sure that we get out to organizations like that.
Right. There, there's that organization, there's a, a Black Women's Superintendent Association, there's a Latino Association Superintendent Association. There are all kinds of associations out there, some of them statewide, some of them nationwide, that can be contacted. And, and all I want, wanted to make sure of was that any search firm that we would eventually hire is that that search firm at least had some contact with those organizations. And, and, you know, and then the overall, overall RFP is a great RFP. I would have liked to have seen that in the evaluation criteria that we were going to utilize a DEI lens. I didn't see that. But it, it, it should be there. And, and then the other thing was, I don't, you know, in terms of the evaluation subgroup or subcommittee, I don't know how that's going to be formed or who forms it. So anyway, those, those are questions that I have.
Anna?
Irv, if you have contact information for some of those associations, it would be super helpful and if, or if you could just send us a list of some of those associations. We've done a, a bit of searching and come up a little bit short, so maybe we're just not searching the right terms. So if you could just forward that, that'd be super awesome.
Yeah, I will do that. I do have a friend who has, for the last ten years, worked with Black principals and superintendents throughout the country. And I will contact him for some of that information.
Good. Thank you. Uh, William?
I was going to say, I know that when I spoke to, look checking references and I spoke to people in Northampton, they had their search committee, or their search firms specifically look at Howard and different other HBCU universities. And so we did discuss that as a group, that we would be tasking, as Margaret said, the search firm that we hired to really go out there and, and look and make sure they're advertising in those places where they can find diversity.
Thank you. And Bill?
Wow. Oh, Margaret.
I move to adjourn, adjourn Union Twenty-Six.
Second.
So, all those in favor? We're adjourned.
Holy moly. Good night.
Thanks, Margaret. Bye, Margaret.
Thanks, Margaret.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So I noticed that Amherst and the region is, is meeting in a few on the agenda. Why is Palom not part of that?
Because the Amherst School Committee asked if we could do a joint for that portion.
Okay. Just because it involves Palom too, the goals. I was just curious why.
We're, it's going to be on our agenda.
Okay.
For November, for next week.
The other thing is, because it's a joint meeting, usually, you know, well, anyway, myself and Sarah Best made the decision that Sarah Best will chair this role rather than it going back and forth, it saves time and effort.
Okay. So our first region-only topic is approval of our minutes from October seventeenth. Uh, yeah. Gabrielle?
If I have a comment, do I need to wait till after a motion is made?
So I will move that we approve the minutes of October seventeenth.
Second.
Perfect. For discussion. Gabriella?
I would like my name to be properly spelled in the minutes. Thank you for only having one L, but it ends with an A rather than an E.
Uh, Katie?
I brought this up at the Amherst School Committee as well, but had recommended that maybe we include the link to the recording that Amherst Media records these meetings because the brevity is great in terms of minutes, but if people want to go back to really see the conversation, it might be nice to have that as a reference point. And I think it was, I think Doug, you said it was just a matter of getting that to be part of the protocol.
I have a question about that.
Yep.
Isn't it?
Gabrielle?
That link, I believe, is posted, if you, if the public goes to the place where they find the meetings, meeting minutes, there's the agenda, there's the minutes, and then there's the link. So it's actually linked at the place where they go to find the minutes.
Perfect. That's great.
So I don't know if it needs to go in this document or the fact that it's already...
I just wasn't sure where they live, like after...
The, like where the minutes live?
Yeah.
So the minutes, once they're approved, they get attached to the meeting that they are part of. So they will all be, all of that information will all be together.
Along with that link as well?
I'm pretty sure it's on there, right?
Yeah. Yeah. It's basically the public version of board docs.
Yeah.
Under, under the date, it has the link.
Cool. Jennifer?
So I wanted to ask also if the members could be identified by the committee that they're on. Sarah Best is identified as regional chair, Irv is an Union Twenty-Six chair, and Margaret as Union Twenty-Six only, but then the rest of us are just listed by name and it doesn't indicate which committee we're on, especially given the two committees. There's a way to add that. I also wanted to ask, I mean, so I think Debbie does a great job with minutes, but, and, and they're very comprehensive, but like the wall of text is really hard to read without paragraph breaks? So I wanted to ask for paragraph breaks in a way that makes sense because just the, I just, I, it's hard for me to read and I was there. So to, for a member of the public to read the wall of text is, is, it's, it's, if we could make it more user-friendly with some paragraph breaks. Wherever it would be appropriate.
Uh, were there any else?
Sorry, I actually, I actually want to, I actually want to, did we, did we have a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, I want to, I want to suggest tabling the motion till next time because I, I, as I said, I find it hard to read and, and understand, even though I'm sure like all the content's there, but I, it was just too hard for me to read. I don't know how that works with tabling a motion, but...
One moment. I have a Robert's Rules cheat sheet, I will...
I can just move it down.
Yeah. Just vote it down.
At some point you do have to approve minutes, but...
Yes, I agree.
Maybe put a paragraph after the speaker.
Yeah.
You can just move to table the motion.
I move to table the motion.
Second. Is that you, William?
No.
No. Oh, Tillman, sorry. All right. All in favor of tabling the motion to approve October seventeenth minutes? Five. All those opposed? Four. And, I did, no abstentions. So our motion has passed, we will table these minutes until next time. Yep, Irv?
If we're going to table the most, this, these minutes until next time, there are corrective actions that Jennifer said need to be take, taken to make them more readable, which means that whoever produced these have to go back and make them more readable, what, you know, whatever that may mean to them or to us. So my question is, how do we know? And how is it going to be communicated to whoever took, took these meaning, minutes that they need to be improved? And what those improvements include?
Well, so I took notes on what everybody requested as updates and I will share them with Ms. Westmoreland.
And the other thing is just a suggestion from a person, a constituent who watches these meetings. And he suggested that we explore minute-taking apps. And I would agree that that should happen.
Okay.
Point of order.
Yes.
Before we move on, could we take a moment to introduce our student reps and introduce ourselves to the, to our student reps?
I was going to do a super, superintendent.
Oh, that's fine, thank you.
I just have a quick question about the minutes. Because we haven't passed them, then they don't get published. Can we publish the draft, what we have right here? As it say draft on it so that it's already online for the public to see?
I think we cannot publish them until they are approved.
Okay. So, in general, if you don't have approved minutes, the minutes that you have, whatever those happen to be, whether they're just handwritten notes by whomever, are technically the minutes until they're approved. So they can stay here and attached until, until they're, you know, approved. And they still say draft at this moment, so they'll, they'll still be considered draft minutes.
But can the public see them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this, uh, yeah. No, that's one of the things I actually shared with, with, uh, staff as far as putting this together is to make a few more, a few things more public. So for one thing, it's making minutes available ahead of time publicly because they're
Right.
legitimately supposed to be available, so there's no reason not to, so.
Thank you.
All right. For anyone who'd like to make a public comment? All right, I did not receive any written public comments or voicemails. So, Irv?
That was a no one?
That, yep, there was a, there was a no, thank you.
All right. Okay, I'm going to bring the mic a little closer. A few things. So first and foremost, I'll, I'll, as you've noticed, there's a couple extra people with us here tonight. Our student representatives are here and I'll actually ask them to introduce themselves, so if you would please.
Hello, everyone. My name is David. I'm a senior here at Amherst and I'm very happy to be here.
Hello, I'm Zingal. I'm also a senior at Amherst and it's a pleasure to meet all of you.
So it's good to have our student representatives, you know, here and providing that perspective of the students on, on things that we're discussing. So appreciate you guys being available and coming out tonight and, and look forward to your, your input to our committee. So you'll notice I have a nice nameplate, courtesy of the Trivia B. So I just want to mostly tell you about the Trivia B. It's a fundraiser that the Amherst Education Foundation puts on, it was a lot of fun. I was there as a judge, basically keeping score with, with the president of, of AEF. It was a fun night, I have to say, the final round, you know, there was a tie at the end of the, you know, the sort of championship rounds, we had to go to ten extra questions to get an actual result. So it was a combination of, of both picking the right answer at the same time, both getting it wrong at the same time, until we got one where one had it right, one had it wrong, and we had a, had a winner. So it was, it was a very fun evening. I think a lot of people had a lot of fun, as it always is. It was the twenty-ninth Trivia B. And they provide tremendous support for our schools in a lot of different ways, promoting initiatives and, and innovative work in, in and around the district. So we're really appreciative of their work and, and hopefully, you know, folks will be wanting to participate in next year's Trivia B. Let's see. So one other thing I'll mention to you is this, and, and I don't know if you've seen this or not, and, and hopefully we'll, being, doing a little outreach here in the next few days, but, but we've, we've started what's called a morning movement and mentoring program, M-M-M-P, at secondary level, primarily middle school students. So these are students that are choosing to come early. We've, you know, shifted our start on the school day till later, which is, is, is good for kids. But there are some kids that, you know, we wanted to provide an opportunity for some support and so we've created this program in partnership with, with our friends at Amherst Recreation. They're going to help us provide some, some of the support. So they do some movement, i.e. they play basketball, they run around, they do a bunch of stuff. But part of it that they do also is mentoring around things like homework completion, grades, et cetera. And so there's a real, you know, combination of approach. It's not just, we're going to come and play, we're going to come together, we're going to do that, but we're first going to check on making sure the academics are in good order and, and support around those things for kids and making sure that they're, you know, getting those kinds of supports academically and, and the importance of that and building that, that, you know, sort of personal culture of, of, of taking care of that work. And then also having an opportunity to, you know, create some community and, and some, bonding with some different folks and some adults. So it's a really neat program. We'll, we'll, I think there's going to be a, be a press release, I think, in the next day or so about it too, but I just want to give you a heads up that, that that's been happening this year. It's a program we actually started last year, but we've got a little broader partnership with the Amherst Recreation to help us out in the town. So that's, it's a really positive thing. I want to make sure that you guys were aware of that. And then the, the last thing I'll mention is just more details. We have, coming up next week, we have an interesting schedule because we have a, a teacher work day or curriculum day, in this case, curriculum day for us, with our staff on Tuesday, which is election day. So while people are in our buildings voting, which is part of why we have a, it's a good day for us to do a curriculum day. But then also on Friday, we're observing Veterans Day. So there's not school on Tuesday nor Friday. Teaching staff, full year staff, et cetera, are, are coming to work on, on the, on the seventh to do some additional work in and around topics of LGBTQIA+. So we're going to have a session at, we'll start at eight-thirty is our keynote session. Read the name of it because it's not the shortest. Supporting non-binary and gender expansive students, all things non-binary and greater, oh, and beyond the gender binary, sorry. And then we have a small break and at nine forty-five, we'll have breakout groups and there are one, two, three, four, five sessions that people can sign up for. Clearly, as part of the contract, all of our teaching staff will be here and be participating in that. We'll, from a logistical standpoint, do the, those sessions via remote meeting techniques or virtual meeting tools. But we did want everybody to come. But we did want everybody to come in, because I think that, you know, during those breaks and, and when we finish the morning and we have a few minutes, we'll have time together as a community to have those additional extended conversations and, and reinforce what we talked about and ask each other questions and sort of build that. Uh, in the afternoon on, on Tuesday, um, you know, we'll have building level or building-based programming, some, some are doing, uh, some sort of fundamental kind of basics kind of work, you know, things that we take care of to make sure that we're ready for when something comes to our building, others are doing pretty, pretty particular curriculum work and having, you know, uh, some additional sessions with that, so each of the schools has some other uh, focus in the afternoon about how they're doing their staff. That, that morning session though, we're, we're bringing everybody in again, so it's, it's, you know, all full year staff, so it's custodial maintenance, uh, central office staff, uh, all our teachers, uh, all our food service folks are all gonna be a part of that. Uh, for our school year staff like paraeducators and, and our, uh, and a few of our school year clerical, um, it's an optional, um, you know, partly by contract, but we're, we have in the contract opportunities, so when we have trainings like this, they are allowed to participate and get paid for that time, so if they come, then they will participate and, and we really strongly encourage them all to be there, uh, in the morning on, on that day and, and to, uh, and to be real partners with us, and so we're continuing on the work that we started at the beginning of the year and, and continuing to build that as, as we go through, so I just wanted to, to give you a little, a little more specifics on the, on the, uh, upcoming curriculum day and, and that's my update, so I'm happy to answer any questions people have.
Tillman?
About the second item that you mentioned, the morning program at middle school, how do students get to the school?
A variety of ways, um, so we do have some transportation as part of that, so we do, uh, you know, kids have signed up for it and have become, you know, sort of active participants in it, we do have some, some opportunities, some vans that can go and pick them up, we have some, some of our staff, uh, that, that, you know, come to work very early, that drive our, our, you know, our, uh, our vans and, and, our driving staff, I should say, that have made it a part of their day and expanded their day a little bit, and, you know, usually works to be overtime for them, but at the same time, they're willing to be partners with, with other folks, you know, other adults to help these kids out. Um, so we do a little, you know, we go and pick kids up as much as we can, obviously if they've got their own way to get here, that's fine too. So we have support that way for, for kids to be able to get here.
So this would be available for students in Levert, for example, too?
That's a great question, I think so, I can double check on that. I'm not sure if they've had or not had kids that are interested from the, from those places, but I'll, I'll double check, I just don't know the particulars on whether they've had any kids of interest there.
Thank you.
Uh, Katie? Welcome to our student reps, Miguel and David, thanks for serving, um, curious to hear about, like, the selection process and, um, second point that you made Doug about the early morning, um, I was able to speak with one seventh grader who's involved and, um, heard just praise for the program, and that is the efforts of the family center staff, is that correct?
Yes.
And fifty kids or so involved?
I think that's right.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm so impressed that people want to get up early and do that stuff, so kudos, kudos for that awesome program. I think that was all I had, but I'd love to hear just more about, like, selection process and what brought you here. Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, so the selection process for the student representatives?
Yeah.
Right, so, um, at the high school, we have a body known as the Student Representative Committee. And from there, within, within that, it's composed of about ten students. We were each asked to come up with a statement, um, about why we were interested in representing our school. And after presenting our statements, um, my brother and I were elected, and I'm interested in, um, being here because I want to, um, I want to bridge the gap between, like, the conversations here, um, in the adult world, um, with the students at the high school. And I want to use that to, um, bring the high school community closer to the middle school community, because I know there's just a big gap, and I think that, um, if there's any room for, um, high school integration, like with this middle school program, I think that would be something worth looking into.
I agree. Yeah, I'm, I was elected with my brother, I'm here to also bridge that gap, I want to be a voice for the students here at Amherst and, yeah.
Thank you. Well, just as you sit on the committee, know that your voice is as important, if not maybe more important than a lot of our voices, cause you're, you're living the experience, so have at it, thank you, thanks for being here.
Uh, Jennifer?
So Doug, I'm gonna ask the same question I asked last time, which I may ask at, at, at each future meeting, which is, um, have any terminations been completed as a result of any of the three Title IX reports?
No, we're still in process.
Thank you.
William?
Um, I was gonna ask, I know that the last meeting we had, uh, you had talked about having a first draft of the report by this meeting, do, how is that going, since I haven't seen anything?
Slowly. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be facetious, uh, it, you know, it's, it's, um, I've done some, some work in, in compiling some things, it's, it's, you know, it's a tricky process to, to, you know, sort of put it together and, and try to, um, shape it in a way that's meaningful. Um, so that's part of the process, is I kind of bring things together, you know, and elements from, from the reports we have and trying to, to sort of, uh, composite them in a coherent narrative for folks, but also, you know, construct that, so it's, 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 you know, it's a work in progress, it's not there yet, um, but definitely, you know, I literally worked on it ten minutes before I came over here to, to spend a few minutes, uh, so I'm, I'm trying to continue to kind of chip away at some of that. You know, this is one of those things that can't really be delegated, cause the number of people can actually look at reports really small. Uh, and, yep. So it's, it's gonna be a, a pretty, you know, nearly focused by me in the large degree to put this together, um, but yeah, chipping away at it, not there yet. Hopefully we'll have it done really soon.
Gabriella?
So I have a follow-up to that, thanks, William, for reminding us about, um, wanting to have some aspect of that report to share, and I, I appreciate that you're putting a great deal of care into it, um, with respect to how much time it's taking, and it is, uh, a challenging task, but I also want to reemphasize how important it is for the community at large to have some information about, um, policy-relevant findings. Because, as I mentioned last time, I think this is, uh, an issue that really has affected the community as a whole, and, um, the community is, uh, from their perspective, seeing a, just a gap of information. So I wonder if there is, um, some way to provide information that's not quite at the level of completion that you're going for, but perhaps just outlines some of the findings of policies that we hope to address. Even if you haven't quite worked it into a, a, a really coherent narrative, but something, uh, it's sort of in process, so that there's at least some information available to the community at large about, um, you know, the topics that are likely to be addressed by this body and by your office. The other piece of that is that, um, since a lot of the findings are, are, well, since the findings that we are going to be dealing with are those that deal with policy and that we can affect, I'm perhaps a little concerned that the number of people who can look at the reports is so small, because that means that we as, as a body, as a governing body, responsible for policies, are, um, taking it from you that your interpretation of the findings is what we're gonna see with respect to policy. So I wonder if there's a way to broaden, um, the number of people who can see that to perhaps include some of the folks on the board, or maybe that's already the case, with respect to looking at those aspects of those reports that can be turned into policy. I realize that's multiple suggestions and questions all in one, but it's related.
No, that's okay, I, I think that, you know, that is the, the, the concern I had from the beginning, and sort of part of why I didn't suggest this earlier, is because the concern I had around, you know, the limitations of what can be public, uh, and how that requires the, both, uh, this group as well as the broader public to, to trust that I'm gonna include everything. Uh, I have no interest in, in not including everything that's possible to be included, so that's, that's, uh, sort of one piece of, of it I will share and, and, you know, it doesn't behoove me or anyone, especially the kids, to, to take anything off of that. And I think the, the, the difficulty though is because these are personal records and, and the way in which the re- reports are written, it's difficult to, to, quite frankly, to share it out in a lot of ways, and, and I think the, the other thing is, uh, you know, there will be, there will be policy that we'll, we'll look at, and I think that you'll have to look at, I think in, in, in many ways, the policies may be fine. It's what do we do procedurally, which is sort of how do we operationalize sort of policy that, that will be the, the more tangible sort of product from this. So it, it, you know, the, but it, but obviously anything that, that, you know, is within the purview of the committee to sort of put into policy or, or augment the policy, you know, is, is definitely gonna be, uh, information we get to as soon as, as, as we can, and I think the, you know, broader community, you know, knows and cares about that, but I think the other piece where we talk about sort of how do we operationalize that, you know, that's gonna be, um, a big piece of it, and, you know, that can be shared as well, and so the, your feedback on that is important, you know, uh, to us as far as, you know, uh, other thoughts about how we might, might be effective with some of these things or other ways to approach some of that, so there's not a, I mean, you know, a large number of people sort of internally, and, and you guys are sort of internal as well, but, uh, certainly, you know, when we get to that phase of this, um, you know, that's where I'll broaden the group of folks that I'm looking to, to, to talk through, what are, what are our sort of corrective actions and, and that sort of thing, and how do we, you know, uh, you know, mobilize this and, and, and operationalize this, and so, um, we'll do some of that internally, we'll bring it back, you know, to you guys, so that'll be a part of what you guys will see, and so it may not explicitly require some alteration of policy, it may, there may be things that are clearly, or it, you know, some of the process of, of those operational pieces may prompt, you know, you as a collective body to say, oh, there's a couple things we want to put into policy that, that codify that in a way that's not there now, so I think those are all becoming, um, and I think, you know, uh, it's just a question of, you know, it's, um, a number of different things we're still trying to do simultaneously with getting this done, so, you know, um, like I said, I, I have no interest in not sharing things that I can share and, and having this linger any longer than, I mean, we want to get to, to be in a place where we can operationalize and take action.
Can I respond to that? I, I, I want to emphasize, I don't, I didn't imply that, I didn't want to imply that you would leave anything out, but any reader or interpreter of a document like that brings their own lens to it, and so, when you have a single person's lens, you know, you get that lens only, and that may lead to a different way to, uh, come to the list of things that are procedures or policies that, that need to be addressed, whereas if you have a few different people looking at something, you, you know, are gonna get perhaps a broader, more diverse, more, um, generalized way of, of looking at that information, so it's something to consider, um, that it's, it's not that you would intend to leave anything out, and, um, maybe nothing will be left out, but how that interpretation is done is pretty important, and yes, I should have said policies and procedures, thank you.
Uh, Katie?
Um, one of the things you mentioned Doug was the professional development on November seventh, um, and the topic at hand. So, I know we're gonna be discussing future agenda items later on in this meeting, but just want to emphasize how helpful it would be to get clarification on the curriculum of a professional development day, how that's decided, who's deciding, who is playing into that decision-making process, what that curriculum looks like. So I would, I know it's with a question mark, but there is an agenda item listed for our next meeting, update on LGBTQIA+ professional development, I would really hope that we can get someone here to discuss what that process is looking like, knowing that we have an absence of an assistant superintendent who spearheaded professional development, so getting a better grasp on who's involved in those decision-making processes and if it is responding to, um, the evident needs of, of our community.
If I may, excuse me if I may, um, it's, it's a, um, the brief story I'll tell you a little bit, it, it's a number of people that are working on that, so, uh, Monica Varra in our, in our, in our, uh, who's our Title IX coordinator, but also our, our, the head of our family center is working in concert with our, um, Director of Curriculum, Mary Kylie, and a host of other people for input and, and coordination and, you know, and, and some outside groups, and, and we're leveraging some of the, you know, uh, Safe Schools Groups, uh, the Stonewall Center, those are all partners with us in, in, in this work, um, and I didn't mention, and partly because I didn't want to leave anybody out, we have a number of folks that are gonna be a part of our, our, our work on the seventh, um, but I can, I can definitely sort of bring back a bit more about that and, and, and they can talk a little bit about how they're sort of putting that together and shaping it, and, uh, I think the other thing I will share, and I should have had this in super intense update, but I'll add it now, um, so one of the pieces that, uh, we talked about since the beginning of the year is forming a parent advisory group and a, and a student advisory group, those are getting underway and they're getting started, parent groups are, are meeting, um, and, and, uh, you know, beginning to, to, to regularize their, their routine and, and their process and, and, uh, students are, are meeting, it's a, that's gonna evolve over the course of the year, how that looks and, and how they, you know, work together with, with, uh, with our staff and, and particular, uh, Maureen Fleming about, uh, you know, the feedback and, but, you know, you know, initial indications from the meetings that they've had, you know, the groups are, are sort of formed, and now it's starting to, to gel into sort of the next steps, which is, you know, gathering that information, feedback, input from these folks and, and, and work with that a little bit, so we'll start to, to, you know, putting things together and thinking about, you know, actionable steps from, from their input and their feedback and, and, um, you know, moving forward as we go along, so it's a little bit of context too, it's about other things we're doing, you know, and folks that are involved in, in part and parcel of this, and, and Maureen's definitely been involved in, in some of the conversations around this, this planning for the seventh of, of November as well.
Earth?
So I just want to circle back to the, uh, to report, uh, specifically the investigation report. You know, the, the letter that was sent to us by Art King, uh, I know all you got it was, I thought it was to everyone, to the entire school committee, from Art King, who is one of the editors of the Amherst Endy, but raised some serious issues, and for, for me, Doug, in relationship to getting together a report, uh, all of us have read the investigation report, every last one of us. I know that I read it twice, once, just to go through for some knowledge, and, and second, uh, with an eye towards what my, uh, experience has been as a management consultant, and certainly there are issues that have policy implications as well as, uh, internal implications. And I believe that those can, uh, be made public without, uh, without trampling on confidentiality or personnel issues, and those things need to be put out there as soon as possible.
Alright, uh, William?
I, I have three, um, things. One, I know last time we talked, someone asked about, um, where we were with hiring a new, a human resource director, do you have an update on where we are on that?
So we put in place, uh, uh, so we had, uh, an HR administrator that was on maternity leave for an extended period of time, uh, and so we brought a different staff member in place and doing that HR administrator, so they're both serving in that role, and so in the short term, I don't think we'll look for an HR adminis- uh, an HR director. I think there's, there's a variety of reasons for that, but, but I think, you know, um, given the staffing we've put into the HR office, I think we've got, uh, people and expertise to do it. And so that's, you know, part and parcel of, uh, you know, the, the leveraging of, of, uh, retired staff, they're helping us out for a little bit, their, their amount of input and is, is significantly reduced now that Their, their amount of input then is, is significantly reduced now that we've got ourselves staffed up more fully. And I think we'll wait and I think that may be, it may be a consideration in the next few months. It may be a thing that it best left to wait until, you know, a new superintendent's online and thinking about what their structure for central office might be relative to either an HR director or assistant superintendent or both or whatever. So I, I think there may be, you know, as we, as we go through the year, we may, we find we absolutely need to have one. And so if that's the case, then we'll, we'll make that adjustment and, and that correction from where we are right now. But at, at the present time, we're using some existing staff and some staff that have been brought over to, to kind of take care of the, the line, share the work and, and we've divided up the tasks in ways that, that it doesn't explicitly require a director at the moment.
Okay. So to follow up on that and also I had asked a few meetings ago about the bullying reporting. And then my follow-up question would be if we don't have an HR director, who's going to be doing those investigations? Or are they going to be divvy-dap? And I, I just, the, the whole, this whole safety plan and then not having an HR director, it'd be nice to know, like, there, I feel like there should be someone in charge. I was just curious if, if, who you have in, in the role currently?
Yeah.
Who would be directing, directly investigating those bullying reports? And do we have any update on?
Right.
The bullying reports?
So in, in particular, you're talking about bullying for staff or are you talking about students that are getting bullied?
Students are getting bullied, but also staff or whoever is, is, you know, filling out the bullying reports. Have we had any reports filled out? And then who is going to be investigating them? I know there was maybe a breakdown of investigations in the past. So if we don't have an HR director, who, who is being tasked with that?
Right. So, so students are getting bullied. We have, you know, a form online that, you know, can be done anonymously, it can be done by the student, can be done by staff for a student if they are, you know, hear a report. Those are handled through the disciplinary channels and process at the, at the building level. So ultimately, the building principal's ultimately responsible. At the secondary level in particular, that goes to deans for investigation, review, you know, et cetera. You know, in response to that report, determinations are made and then ultimately, you know, by the, by the principal in that regard. So that, that's how the student side's handled. Anytime we have staff involved, any kind of, whether it's a formal sort of bullying circumstance or any other sort of complaint, staff against staff or anything else, any, any question of, of that, those complaints go to HR. And so with these two administrators and, and again, leveraging some, some retired staff, there's a couple of different people that are helping us out in, in HR around this as well. But, but depending on who's involved, right? So if it's, you know, teachers, we have certain staff assigned to certain bargaining units. If it's a circumstance where it's someone who's not at a bargaining unit, then it's, it'll really be, you know, a cooperative approach probably, you know, who has capacity and time and experience to sort of deal with that particular circumstance. Obviously involves something like Title IX, it's still going to involve our Title IX coordinator, which is Martina Guevara. So it, 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 it depends a little bit on, on who might be the employee that's involved in our game.
I was thinking it was student versus employee.
Yeah. In that circumstance, again, it, it would be, that would be because it was a student that was, you know, the, the victim for, that would be again through the, through the disciplinary channel. And then obviously if that, so the initial stage of that, so a student would fill out or the, you know, someone would fill out that, that form because it involves a student in, in regard to being a victim of that, of that circumstance. If staff are identified as the person potentially perpetrating that, then, you know, that dean in the secondary level or, or principal would, would then engage with HR. And again, depending on who that was, whether they're a paraprofessional, that's, you know, most of our APEA staff, so that's our clerical, our, our paraprofessional, our teachers are handled by one individual. Jadera Torres Manzano is working with that unit. If it was say a custodian, then that's Jen Ortiz, who's back from maternity leave. So Jen would be handling the APSME group, Institute Service, it's, it's, Jen Ortiz. If it was one of our administrators, then that would be Jadera. So that's how we split it up. Again, you know, the lines aren't hard, but they are, are largely divvied in that, in those categories of who's taking which piece in that regard. But again, sometimes if it's, you know, if, let's say, just to step away from the example of a student, but if it was say two staff and one's in one unit, one's in another unit, it's like, it's going to be one of those circumstances where, you know, the, you know, they're going to have to work cooperatively in that process to, to sort of work through that investigation. And, and, you know, if it's complicated enough, we'll, we'll probably, you know, if we really have a, a, a difficult situation, again, we can seek outside help in that regard like we did with the, with the timeline work. It was, it was beyond the scope of what was best done by us internally. So all those are, are part and parcel. So there's a, you know, that's a non-specific answer in some ways and I'm sorry, it's, it, but we are taking sort of this cooperative and overlapping approach and, and trying to leverage the, the expertise and technique, you know, expertise and talents of, of a couple of different people to help us through that.
Do you feel like the administrators would know who to go to?
Yeah. We've definitely messaged out who's taking which responsibilities. And, and again, you know, like I said a moment ago, it's, you know, we're not currently seeking an, an HR director at the present time, but it, it may be that as we work through this and it, you know, evolves over the next, you know, month or two, we may go, oh my gosh, we really have to do something different. We're going to have to set this up differently. So we're, we're continuing to monitor whether it's working as well as part and parcel of how we, how we approach it. So if it, if it turns out that this, you know, sort of divvy of work and, and balance of things is, is not functional for us, we're going to do what's best for kids and the best, and best for the district and, and so then we'll, we'll make a change if we need to.
Okay. My last question. I was actually at the meeting today, it was the first meeting of the LGBTQ parents. And there was a lack awareness of the bullying reporting online and there was a lack of awareness on the pronoun stuff. So just out of, as an update, how has that been rolled out other than just being online? And are students aware of that? Are faculty aware of that? Because it didn't appear in this meeting that faculty were aware of that, nor the parents. But sometimes we all don't read emails, so.
Right.
I'm aware of it, but then I'm here, so.
Right. I think, I think the, you know, so for example, the, the pronoun change form is, is, is brand new this year. It's on the main page of the website. We, we've tried to message that out, we'll continue to message that out. I asked about, because you'd posed the question at a previous meeting about, well, how many people have used the form? And I, and I spoke to, you know, our, our technology people about it and they said, none. But that doesn't mean, but yet the other piece of that story is that there have been several students who have, have actively changed their pronoun and their, their, their preferred name. And so the form hasn't technically been utilized and yet there's some messaging around how to do it and, and other ways to approach. Because it's not technically, it's not the only way to do it. So I think what we find in this circumstance so far is that for kids around that, they're finding a trusted adult and sort of conveying that information and we're, you know, sort of passing the details along appropriately through the chain. So hopefully that's working well for folks. We're continuing to kind of keep an eye on it and, and we'll see. I think around the bullying form, you know, we made a, we made a, we've sort of expanded it a little bit. We've had it for several years. We've made a few changes to it to broaden the sort of harassment category piece to that. It is getting used. I think we, we try to message out regularly and, you know, I think sometimes, and, and this is a, you know, it's a broad statement, not specific to this, you know, the tricky thing with communication when we have volume like we deal with, you know, because we talk about this relative to like pre-internals, you know, lunch applications and any of a number of things. It's like, or, or information we send to employees, it's like, well, we sent you that form. And we, you know, oftentimes it comes with 12 other things. And if you're not in the right sort of mindset, frame of reference to sort of see it and really truly process it, it doesn't lock in. And, and so we have to continually work on our efforts to communicate with folks. And so I appreciate the feedback about that. We'll, we'll take that into consideration and kind of continue to, to make sure that people are, are aware and see it and, and encourage to leverage that as a tool because we, we want to know about those things, take those in consideration, take action on them as, as, you know, actively and quickly as we can, whether it's bullying, harassment or not. You know, sometimes filling that form out, I think people feel like, you know, they may be hesitant, they're like, oh, maybe I don't think it's that much. It's like, when in doubt, fill it out because it, it's really a circumstance where we'll do the, we'll do the, the legwork on it and figure it out. Because, and, and given the definition of like bullying in particular in the state of Massachusetts, very prescriptive in how it works, a lot of things don't fall under that category, strictly speaking by law. At the same time, that doesn't mean we don't take corrective action for disciplinary response. So we do investigate those. We're trying to, you know, make sure our processes around that, you know, review of those, doing our investigations, results of those investigations, whatever, what, what other active steps we need to take, you know, to, to work with that information, you know, all part of that, we want to be getting better at that and making sure that, you know, those, those are leveraged to their, to their full extent, whether they're really truly bullying or not. So people, you know, when in doubt, should fill that out and, and we want to, like I said, message it out that they can use that form and, and, and clearly, you know, if, if staff notice and, you know, they can, they can use that too, or they can, you know, just report through our regular process. And again, I think, you know, refining that for ourselves and, and formalizing some of those steps is, is an important piece. And I think that'll be some of the stuff we start to see in the, in the reporting is, is making sure those things happen and, and that we have the steps in place for the sort of checks and balances, make sure things kind of progress through like they're supposed to.
Miguel?
So regarding the bullying form, I think I speak for many students in saying that I'm not, I'm not aware of it or, and, or where I can find it. And if it's intended to be used even for like things students might not be sure if it's considered bullying, I think maybe trying to get it to students should be prioritized, I think. I know many students don't check their emails. So maybe this could come through a form of announcement or, I'm not sure. But recently I haven't heard anything about bullying form from the student perspective.
So if you indulge me, I'll show where it is in like 12 seconds. Hold on.
Watch on the screen.
It's on the website.
Let's do it.
It's definitely there.
It's their homepage. What are you talking about?
It should probably be in Power School.
Is it students or is it still got up here?
Well, we can make it flash or something, but I, you know, I, I, the difficulty I have is that it's the same size text and it's not a different color or anything. So it blends in with like contact us and, and news. But that's, that's literally the link, right on the main page of the ARPS website. And, and then you click to begin a new incident. I won't do that because we don't need straight entries and that sort of thing. But I think, I'm sorry, I should get to the mics so people in the public can hear it. It's like, so it's right there on the main website. You know, I, I think that the thing I would.
It's for anyone?
Perhaps. Suggests we add it to the main page of each of the school websites because I think that's maybe more often where, where kids look. It may be there, I haven't looked at the particular school sites lately to see if it's, it's sitting there, but I always pretty use it fine.
It's a little misleading as it reads now because it says forms for parents and guardians. So it, as I look at it, it, I, as a student, I wouldn't even touch it because, for obvious reasons.
Gabrielle?
I think that students use Power School during the, as, you know, sort of a way to access their homework and so on. Is that, is that right? Couldn't this be added as a link, you know, something that they can access through Power School as opposed to, I mean, this can stay there for other folks like parents and staff, but if we want students to interact with it or know that they can interact with it, is there a way to add it to Power School?
I can double check. I don't see why not. If, if it's technically straightforward to do, then yeah.
Anna?
I have just a quick, two things. One is maybe it could also be mentioned in advisory. I don't know if high school has advisory as well as middle school, but if the advisors could say, hey, just so you're aware, this is the new link. And then the second thing is, I wanted to follow up on William's comment about the HR. I was wondering if you have stopped using the consultant?
We're still using the retired staff that we brought back to help us out, yeah.
I would really like you to stop.
Well, it's under the purview of, of me and my staff in not a school committee action.
I'll, I'll, I'll email you about it.
All right. Any final comments? Gabrielle?
Maybe this is point of order, I have a question about the point that was just brought up. Could the school board express an opinion based on a vote with respect to something that is?
No, it's personnel.
No?
No. There are only very few people. We have purview of, like personnel purview over, it's superintendent, director of finance, specialized director, assistant superintendent, maybe? It, it, it's like very, very few people. And then under, anything else under that is all superintendent. William?
Could we make a policy that our superintendent has to hire a HR director or no?
I don't, I don't think so. I think that's.
I was just curious.
Yeah. I don't think so because that's still a procedural, operational thing and is, we do policy. All right. All set? Katie?
Just so it's on the record, I'll just echo Anna's sentiments as well.
Excuse me, what are those sentiments? What, what did she say?
I don't want to use the HR director. I don't want to use the consultant any longer.
All right. But this is not under our purview, so I think we need to move on from this. All right. Any final questions for the superintendent? Perfect. Okay. Chairs update. I do not have any specific updates, school committee announcements. Do you want to read that?
Yes.
All right.
All right. This is a, a letter from myself and Katie as chairs.
Nope, Sarah Best.
Sarah Best. All right. Yes, all right. Herb Rhodes is getting back on in the track. Anyways, this is a letter from myself and Sarah Best as chairs of the, of the committees. And, and this letter will be available to everyone. It should have been done today, but it didn't happen. Anyway, this letter is a formal response from the chairs of the Union 26th and Regional School Committees in response to an incident on October the 10th in the superintendent's office. Two members of the committee removed highly confidential personnel material from the superintendent's office, directly disregarding the request of the chairs and the direction of legal counsel. By policy, the chairs speak for the respective committees. As elected and appointed officials of our respective towns, we are bound and expected to adhere to the highest standards of ethical conduct and professionalism. The members who took it upon themselves to remove the document violated the trust placed in them by their fellow school committee members and our constituents, putting, putting our district staff in an untenable situation. This directly undermines the integrity of our committees. To protect the district from liability for mishandling personnel material and preserve the names and identities of the brave people who came forward to tell their truths, the chairs along with legal counsel chose to keep the documents under lock and key and supervision of the superintendent. If we cannot guarantee protection for the people who've come forward, how can we ask or expect them to come forward? This decision was never intended to withhold information. Instead, it was to share all the information as safely and responsibly as possible. As soon as members of the committees brought it to the chair's attention, that the system in place was untenable and the chairs took, the chairs took immediate action. A meeting was set for the same day to work with legal counsel and the superintendent to find a solution and compromise that would satisfy the needs and requests of the committee members while still protecting the district from potential legal ramifications for mishandling personnel material. Less than one hour after the incident occurred, a solution, a solution was presented and the timing of the incoming solution was made clear to these members. The chairs cannot in good conscience make decisions that have potential legal ramifications, ramifications for the district. It must be understood that the legal counsel is unavailable, is not available at a moment's notice. And thus, we have to wait for his response. It is our hope and desire that these kinds of incidents do not take place in the future. The committees can continue to focus on their work, including hiring a highly qualified permanent superintendent and committing to policies and procedures that allow and encourage our students to be their best, most, their best, most authentic selves, so they may continue to learn and prosper. Signs, Sarah Best, Katie and Herb Rhodes.
Are there any other school committee announcements? Jennifer? Are there any other, uh, school committee announcements? Jennifer?
I'd like to respond to that letter. Which I only just heard and didn't see ahead of time. So first, the, a, a comment was made about putting staff in an uncomfortable position. And, um, just to be clear, I'm one of the staff members, uh, one of the school committee members mentioned in the letter who removed the report from the superintendent's office. I had contacted the superintendent about having the unredacted report. And this, the interim superintendent made it clear that the decision was up to the chairs as to whether or not school committee members could have the unredacted report. So the interim superintendent at the time ceded his power to allow school committee members to have a report or not, made it clear that that decision was made by the chairs and not by the interim superintendent. So when I removed the report, I did think to myself, am I putting the interim superintendent in a position where he may have to stop me? And I realized, no, I'm not because he had already told me it was not his decision to make. So it was also not his, not, not within his decision to prevent me from stopping because it was not his decision to make. I, I did think about that before I did it. It was also stated that the report was under lock and key in the superintendent's office, but my understanding is that the two chairs had the unredacted reports in their possessions. I, I want to, I want to acknowledge that this was a very, um, very new situation that none of us had been in before and we were all making it up as we go along and things were in flux. Um, looking back, I, I wish that the chairs had declined to take the unredacted reports themselves. I wish that the chairs had said, if my committee members can't have the unredacted report, then I'm not going to take it either. Then what if it puts us all on the same playing field? But it was my understanding that the chairs were in possession of the unredacted report. So it's not exactly accurate that it was under lock and key under the superintendent's office. As for the timing of the solution, we, I was not made aware that a solution was pending. The, um, regional school committee chair did ask me to wait because she was going to have a discussion with the attorney, but didn't say we're coming up with a solution a, and didn't assure me that a solution would be coming. I, I, she did ask me to wait and I declined to wait. So again, I, it, it was a really tricky situation for all of us. I can't say I would have done any better in, if I were in one of the chairs, although as I said, I would have declined to take the report myself. And we were all making it up as we go along and I think we all did the best that we could. And I don't regret any of my actions. And I think that what I did was not betraying the trust of the community, but was upholding my responsibility to the community. Thank you.
You know, I'm going to respond because other people who were in the same position as you were, Jennifer, did not take the same actions as A. B, it was clear that these materials were not to be removed from the superintendent's office. It was very clear. That was made clear to everyone, that you were to come and read the materials there. There was nothing that was said that, hey, you can come and read these materials and then take them.
Yeah, I know.
The opposite was said. It was said, you are to read them here. Those were our explicit directions.
Indeed, they were.
So if they're explicit directions, how can you sit there and say it was ambiguous situation?
I did not say it was ambiguous. I admit that I took it without, uh, going against your speci- specific instructions. I admit that.
Okay.
I'm done.
Katie?
I just want to say that, um, we're all here for students. We've all read the report. We know what the report says. And I think our focus, that was in the past. We need to move forward and make better for our students. So if we can just move on without hashing this out, that would be my recommendation.
Oh, okay. Oh, moved on. All right. So any other further school committee announcements from subcommittees or any of the like? Okay. So you have to call them to order.
Point of order.
Yep.
I believe, uh, so I was not aware when this meeting was posted that the Amherst School Committee was going to be called to order. I see it now, but this meeting was not properly posted as an Amherst School Committee meeting. It is not posted on the Amherst website, which is an open meeting law requirement for Amherst School Committee meetings. So this meeting is not posted on the town of Amherst website as an Amherst School Committee meeting. So I strongly suggest that we not call the Amherst School Committee meeting to order because it would potentially be an open meeting law violation.
Doesn't matter. We can cover what we need to. Doesn't matter. We can cover what we need to.
Okay. All right. I will stop taking then. All right. So we will forego that piece. Uh, so our next, uh, item is to have a conversation regarding hybrid slash, uh, in-person meetings.
Doug. Yes, I can talk to that. So, um, the question about how to do or how could we do a hybrid type meeting if people needed to travel and be, uh, separate from, from this group tonight? So I spoke with our, our IS director and talked about potential ways to, to do that with the arrangement we have here, uh, capabilities we have here and, uh, and what Amherst Media can do. And so, you know, we don't have the same setup as the town hall does to do, uh, sort of hybrid type meetings. But there is a, a potential solution. We'll do a little testing of it, uh, in the coming week. Essentially, we would set up a, a Google Meet, which, you know, like a Zoom meeting, but a Google Meet, um, which we often do anyway or have done. And so, uh, the Google Meet would be the, the primary, uh, mechanism for the meeting. The folks that are in person, we would have a, a, a microphone and a camera that would be able to sort of see the group and pick up the audio from the, from the group. Uh, and that's the part we'll be testing over the, the next week or so. We've ordered a piece of equipment to, to, to do that and we'll see how that works. And then the person that would be, you know, the person or persons that would be remote would join the, the, the Google meeting, um, virtually. And so they'd be on the Google Meet, you know, the sort of in-person people would be in the Google Meet via the, the camera and microphone here. There'd also be a speaker here so that when the person that was remote or persons that were remote would, would speak, then the, it would be broadcast to this group of people that are, that are in person. And then from the standpoint of like Amherst Media, they can tap in directly to, uh, that Google Meet, much like they do, they can, you know, when we broadcast, uh, when they broadcast and if they want to show what's on screen, they tap into the sort of computer output here. That becomes the, the, the feed that goes into their, their video. So, uh, essentially the entire Google Meet would be done, you know, on the computer and so they would tap into that. So the, the broadcast for Amherst Media would be via, uh, the Google Meet. And so it would look like a Google meeting, except on your TV screen if you're home on TV or, you know, the recording that we would make from, uh, from that Google Meet would be the, the recording that gets preserved. So technologically, that's sort of how it would work. Basically, the people that are in person in this room would be sort of one person, one person joining the Google Meet with the sort of technology of speakers, uh, camera, microphone, uh, to pick up and also to hear the other members. Then any person that's remote would be joining remotely to that meeting. And then displays of, of documents and whatnot would be done through the sharing, you know, features of, of, of Google Meet. And that's, you know, sort of technologically, the sort of best fit for what we have and capability we have. And then, and then because the Google meets through the computer, then that meeting, that virtual meeting, would be what would be fed to the broadcast for, for Amherst Media.
So would we each have our own device?
No.
No. We would have a school provided camera and microphone.
There would be, it's, it's like a three sixty camera, so it'd sit in the center of the room here and face all of you kind of simultaneously.
Like an owl?
And similar, what's that?
Like an owl?
Yeah. And then similarly, the microphone would be the same. It would be picking up sound from everyone in the, in the space. And that's sort of the, that's the piece of the test is making sure that the audio would be decent for the persons that would be remote to be able to hear anyone in the room, um, in the, in that circumstance. And obviously, the, you know, I don't know how smart the technology on the camera is, is whether it, it pivots to the person speaking or if it's just a broad view of the whole group. But I think that, that, uh, you know, as opposed to like the small camera sitting on top of that monitor right there, which wouldn't do a very good job of, of capturing the full group. I mean, it's a little more sophisticated camera than that. I just don't know how sophisticated.
And so on the Google Meet, would there be one square that's that camera? And then one square that's the person who's remote?
Yes.
And so Amherst Media wouldn't be, um, projecting what they're, what this camera, the, the, in the room camera, they'd be?
Right. They'd be taking the live feed directly from the Google Meet. So I think the, the difficult circumstance to test is when we have a larger group like this, um, and how that looks. You know, uh, if you think about other committees that are smaller, it would probably work a little better. It'd be a little easier to see who's who because it's a group of, you know, five or so, uh, six. In this size group of, of a dozen people, it, it becomes a little more, um, tricky to pick everybody up in a good way. I, I just don't know what the, what the technology looks like. So we're, that's probably what we're going to test when we, when we get it in hand.
Tillman?
I'd like to note that the governor extended the, um, what's it called? The updated guidance on the COVID rules for open meetings until March, um, twenty twenty-five. And so theoretically, we could hold, uh, meetings via Zoom or Google Meets where all of us are remote. I personally would prefer that. I love sitting here with you guys, but, um, there are certain benefits to also having that where everybody's equally distant from their camera and, um, can easily join. You might also get more of the public to join us. And so I would suggest that we consider that too as an option.
I will say, a year ago, a year and a half ago, uh, we, as a group, decided to come back to be in-person and voted on it, uh, so we can, you know, be in the, for, for many reasons, but part of which was to be in the space that we are, you know, supposed to be overseeing. Herb?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I brought this forward because a number of constituents have said, hey, look, it's easier for us to view this from home. And we don't think that watching it on television is the same as a virtual or a hybrid meeting. As A, B, the evidence from what happened during COVID shutdown and, and when everything was virtual, uh, and the governor's office and the legislature are looking at this, is that participation increased exponentially. It was, it's an incredible amount of, of more participation. Why? Because a lot of people just can't get in their cars and come to a meeting. Some people, uh, can't do it because of family matters, children, work, etc., coming, getting home late. Some because it's more, it's more convenient, more convenient to be at home so that they could take part in it. So the participa- it's not only just participation, but accessibility. There are just situ- uh, situations that present themselves where people cannot get up and come to a live meeting such as this. If this meeting were virtual or hybrid and it was posted as such and made, and, and made known to the public, then we would have people on that screen that are not here. We would have those people on the screen. It is, the data is really, really, really good. I'm, so what I'm saying is that if we are going to be fair, if we're going to make our meetings more accessible, and also, the other thing is, we live in New England. And as Samuel Clemens says about New England, if you don't like the weather, wait a minute. We, you know, all of us could be in a position, you know, it, it could very easily have been where snow came down today, that it would have been a, a couple inches, four or five, that may travel very, really hazardous. And this meeting would have had, had to be postponed. But if it were hybrid, wouldn't made any difference.
Anna?
I'm all for having a hybrid option, especially for the community. I think that the, the committee itself should really commit to showing up every week, every other week in person, unless there is a solid reason why they are unable to do so. And yes, you know, if somebody makes travel plans and the only way they can participate is, is virtually, I think that's a great opportunity to still have them be present. At least they, they can participate. But I think that because you prefer to be at home is maybe not the best reason to just do it from, uh, a remote location. I think that showing up in-person, seeing the people who bothered to come to the in-person meeting and being able, letting them see you directly, I think, given the, the last bit of very emotional testimony that we were receiving from constituents, I think they wanted to see our faces in-person. They wanted to speak directly to us. They didn't want to speak to a screen. And to not show up and allow them to do that, I think would be doing them a disservice. And so I think we should make every effort that we can to be here. But as a backup plan, we can use the hybrid model or we can use the virtual tool. And definitely the community should be more than welcome to use the virtual tool. But I think that we should commit ourselves to showing up every time we have a meeting, if we can.
I want to double check. Um, I think there was, one of the, um, pieces of having a hybrid meeting is there has to be a quorum in-person. Um, so that would help with that piece.
A chair does not have to be here to have a quorum. You need to read that again.
I, I didn't say a chair. I just said a quorum.
Yeah, a quorum doesn't have to be quite present in a hybrid meeting. There's no
I will double check.
There's no requirement for that. Otherwise, there, why would you have a law such as that go through if it had to be a quorum present in the room?
For a hybrid meeting.
For a hybrid meeting.
Not, not for
Not for a virtual.
A virtual meeting, but for a hybrid meeting.
Yeah.
You have to have a quorum physically present.
And I'm saying that I do not think that's the case. You can check the law, what it says.
It says, uh, any or all members of the public body may continue participating in a meeting remotely. The open meeting law requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physical, physically present at the meeting location remain. Oh, suspended. Just kidding. Incorrect. I read that backwards. I apologize. You read it the right way. I read it backwards. I apologize. Uh, Jennifer?
So we all survived virtual meetings during lockdown. And I think all virtual, entirely virtual meetings are effective. I think we've all learned that, that we can conduct business and, and, and via all virtual meetings. And I think in-person meetings like this work really well. I don't think hybrid meetings work well when some people are not present and some people are present. I, I just, I haven't seen a body do that well, except for the Amherst Town Council, which does do a good job with hybrid meetings. But they have the infrastructure and they have a staff person who, who manages the logistics of the meeting. And they have a situation where each individual who's present has their own device and they have their own square in the Zoom. They use Zoom instead of Google Meet. And they have speakers and they have, uh, uh, microphones. So they, a, and, and they have a staff member who like manages all of that. I think they do a good job, but other than that, I, I just, I'm not, I don't think hybrid meetings are effective. And what Doug was describing of having a Google Meet where, where one square is all of us and then the other squares are people, m, m, school committee members who are remote and then the public is viewing the Google Meet and the public is not viewing this, it, it, it just, I don't, that, I don't see how that's, I, I, I don't think that's an improvement and I don't think that serves the public. I think that, I agree with Anna that we as committee members should commit to showing up in-person. I, I think if there's a one-off situation where one of us has, has, you know, is traveling to a professional conference and we can't decide the dates of the conference, on a one-off basis, once in a while, if one of us needs to be remote, then I'm, I guess I'm okay with that, but there needs to be a better solution than what this body has done in the past. But, but that's not, that doesn't seem to be what we're talking about. But, so yeah, on a one-off basis, I think if someone can't make it, or like you've tested positive for COVID, but you still feel, uh, still feel like you can participate, you just don't want to be here in person because obviously you're, you're quarantined, that would be fine. But I feel like I agree with Anna that we should commit, the members should commit to being here in person when at all possible. And if we're, if, yeah, so, um, other than, you know, occasional travel. Yeah, so I, I feel like if, if, and, and there was a case, I think this March, where the meeting just changed from in-person to all virtual because of weather. And, and I, I think that's fine. I think that's reasonable to just change a meeting to all virtual because, as Herb said, we live in New England. But for the most part, um, I would, I, I, I think all virtual works and I think all in-person works. And I think a hybrid on an ongoing basis is not, is not a great idea.
Thank you. Gabriella?
So, uh, I agree that, um, there is a definite benefit to being in-person. There's a different kind of dynamic that takes place among the committee members. There's a different kind of dynamic that takes place among the committee members when we're in person. However, I think that there are plenty of reasons to try to create greater access, both for committee members and definitely for the public. Saying that we should pay attention to quote-unquote "those who bothered to show up" is not noting the fact that some people do not have the opportunity to make that choice and would like to be able to communicate with the members of the committees. So I think that we really owe it to people with a variety of life situations to be able to be in communication with the committees when we meet. Also, with respect to making the greatest possible effort to be here in person, I agree. And then the question becomes, where is the line between what, to me, seems the greatest possible effort versus what to somebody else seems like, oh, they just feel like being at home? You know, if I'm not feeling so well, should I make the effort to come? Or, you know, is it just another headache or whatever? Today, I had a change of circumstance at home and actually have a 10-year-old sitting over there in the, in the other part of the library. And, you know, is it fair to the 10-year-old to be here until whatever hour we're finished? So, you know, yeah, I decided I wanted to make the greatest effort. But I think if we continue to look for ways to improve how we serve the committee, that means we can try an approach, and maybe after seeing it, we think, well, okay, it's not so bad. Or maybe after seeing it, we think, you know what, this really takes away from what we're trying to accomplish. Then we can iterate on that solution. But to not try anything because we don't have the best solution, I think, is not a good way to look for continuous improvement in the way we do things. So my opinion would be to at least try to improve what we do.
Thank you. Yep, Jennifer?
I'm definitely, I'm, thank you, Gabriella. I am open to trying and to improving our access, access to our meetings for the public. So I know, Sarah, as you just said, that the directive from the governor says that the requirement that the chairs and a quorum be in person is suspended. And I know that that's not a requirement, but I feel like if we're going to try something new with new logistics, I feel like the chair should be here in person. Just because like, sorry, sorry, I'll be here too. I just feel like that's, I think it would be weird to chair, at least on a regular, like, once in a while if you can't make it. Again, as I said, once in a while if you can't make it, that's understandable. But I think it would be weird for us and for the chair to try to chair a meeting when you're remote. That just feels weird to me.
If it's, are you saying if it's hybrid versus virtual?
Well, all-virtual, everyone's virtual. If it's a hybrid meeting, I would think the chair should be here because it's, I think it's awkward to chair a meeting when some of us aren't here in person if the chair is virtual.
Yes, that, as the person who has chaired the meeting, that sounds terrible. So.
It's just, again, Doug and Jerry, Jerry is working on this during champagne. And we should just try it out, see what it looks like.
Yeah. Anna?
Yeah, I mean, I still think that we can try it out for the community and keep us still basically here, unless there's an emergency. And then, so I don't want to have a hybrid meeting where half of us are virtual just because we'd prefer to be at home. I want to have a hybrid meeting where we're all here, and as many of the community members are virtual as they want to be, and as many community members can still show up here and look us in the face if they want to. And then if, you know, something comes up and we just can't make it, you know, we can still participate. But I do think that we should make a strong commitment to trying to show up.
Katie?
So, full disclosure, I think I mentioned this at another meeting, but I'm going to be away. And I've already emailed the chairs about any missed meetings and how to connect. I think we're talking a lot about a hypothetical situation or having this discussion. Is there anyone, like, here, other than myself, where this would apply? Because it seems like we're talking a lot about something that I'm
I travel a lot. And I'm a part of a startup, and I know that my winter travel plans are going to be all over the place.
For more than like a meeting or two at a time.
I don't know.
Okay.
So it sounds to me consensus is, we should continue pursuing this option and see how it goes and adjust if it is not good.
I agree. I think so.
Okay.
So we can try it out on the 14th because I'll be in transit. So it'll be a giant experiment coming from Logan.
Okay. So next up is for us to discuss the superintendent goals. So I did, well, before we dive into our discussion about this, I did want to just remind us all that the superintendent contract has a limit of four goals across all three districts. So a total of four goals. So as we're going through and thinking about that, we should be aware.
Did you want me to introduce this?
Yep.
Okay. Sort of shared in the materials is what I shared with the Amherst School Committee last week, and is a slight modification in what was attached to the last agenda that we had that we didn't complete. So most of it stayed the same. I think the fourth goal has a slight alteration from what you saw before. Again, you know, in putting these together, I leveraged, I looked at, you know, sort of past superintendent goals that we've had in the most recent years and sort of looked at sort of form and format of those to create these, you know. But, you know, I'm open to whatever ultimately the committee wants to decide. I think there's a couple of things I'll point out. In doing the full evaluation of a superintendent, it actually involves making ratings.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. It does require making ratings on a number of different metrics. It's not just the things that are in the goals. Goals obviously are tied to particular standards, but you have to rate the superintendent on all the standards to some level or not. And provide, you know, narrative relative to those. And as far as this artifacts or materials that we bring forward to you is largely focused on goals, but we'll probably bring some other things that, you know, apply to some of the other standards that are part and parcel of the administrative evaluation metric and rubric. The other thing I'll point out is that, and this isn't, you know, wanting to sort of dodge this in any way, but I think the thing I would say is that this year's evaluation is largely for whoever is taking over on July 1. You know, normally, you've got someone that's in place, you're expecting him to stay in place. And so you're working, you know, any evaluation you're doing is trying to improve performance of that person. And in this circumstance with a superintendent, their performance and the organization's performance as a whole. And I think that in this particular circumstance, because I'm in interim, there'll be a process to hire someone. It's likely that, you know, there's no guarantees who will be in the chair of the first of July. And so I think a lens you may take on thinking about the goals is, and thinking about how you're doing the evaluation in general, is maybe less specifically about me personally, and more about the position and information we want to convey to the district as a whole, community as a whole, and particularly whoever takes charge in July. So I'm hoping that that is a helpful sort of framing device for you a little bit. More specifically, as far as the goals, like I said, I'm open to, you know, suggestion, amendment, whatever. I mean, I think there's a, you know, there is technically a subcommittee for the, for goals that's in the regional school committee. You know, I think, again, sort of historically, I think they've made sure to conclude an Amherst member and a Pelham member, so that you get those perspectives from those two committees as well as those get created. So I think that, you know, that there's a number of ways we can go with this. I'm open to whatever the committee is thinking about and wants to do.
Irv?
Doug, I'm really glad you mentioned the overall process for the goals, but also what the goals themselves meant for a person who was going to be here. And I would like for us to think in terms of the context in which we're going to be trying to come up with goals. Just to mention, Doug's term ends July 1, and by contract, he will return to his previous position. Two, transitional issues are front and center when an interim is in place. Guidance might be a better term in this situation rather than goals. Doug must prepare the way for the new superintendent with the central office, staff, principals, school committees, and the entire school community. Given this challenge, what guidance should he have from the school committee? I want to emphasize that the context in which this guidance is given, including that a newly elected school committee will be in place in January.
Kay?
I want to thank you, Doug, for passing along the evaluation website from Desi. That was really helpful to review. Just in taking that information and applying it to this, I guess my question would be, are we looking to align with what Desi recommends in terms of having one student learning goal, one professional practice goal, and then the remaining being in response to the district improvement plan? That would be my first question. Another question is, I think I expressed it in another meeting. I'm not, I don't quite recollect, but seeing these goals as an opportune way to speak to the current issues that we're experiencing in the district and being able to respond in a fashion that showcases these artifacts or whatnot to show the progress that we're making to improve on the current issues in the district.
Is that for the committee or is it, because the committee is the one who's going to be working on setting goals for Doug. Are you asking the committee?
Sure. I'm asking it in general. It's a discussion right now, yeah?
Yeah, all right. Just wanted to make sure.
Anna?
So, thanks for this, Doug. This is a little, definitely took some of our comments from the last time we talked about this and added some new goals to this. I'm a little bit curious why you focused on math and not reading. It's just out of curiosity. It's not a criticism at all. And then the second thing is, I think there was sort of like a general point being made, or I think Irv said, this is really about an interim and then a transition to a permanent superintendent. And what I don't see on this is a transition plan. And I don't think we need everything in the goals specifically, but just to note that there isn't anything about making a smooth transition to the next person who's in the position or setting up sort of like a way to get all of the information to them. So I'm not saying that we should add that. I'm just saying that I'm noticing that. I don't know if that's helpful.
Irv?
Yes, I mean, tonight, here we are tonight, we're together tonight. We have some goals. There are, is it four goals?
There are four listed.
Four goals among three entities. So the question is, which goal would Amherst Schools be more appropriate for Amherst Schools?
I don't think we can talk about that.
I know we can't, but if we can't talk about it, then how are we to then say, well, these three will be for the region, or these four will be the region? Or if we can't talk about it, if we cannot talk about that at this meeting, and there are only four goals, does that mean that Amherst, when we meet, when Amherst meets, can say, we're going to take whatever the region didn't take? Or Pelham did? I'm just asking a question. Where are we on this?
Anna?
So I think we find four, see if we agree with that these four goals are, you know, good. And then
Good for whom?
For us.
For the region.
For the region, because that's who we are. And then Amherst will meet separately, and they will look at these four goals and say, well, actually, these goals don't focus enough on Amherst, and we want to have a small modification to them. Or they may say, yes, this is good enough. But I think, as the region, all we can do is look at it from a regional perspective. And Amherst will have their own meeting, and Pelham will, or Pelham will have their own meeting. And if they have modifications, then Doug might modify the goals, and then we can come back again and try again. But I think, right now, what we need to do is look at these and say, I think that's a good start.
Are we not, we're not going to be voting on that, though? Is that correct?
We have to.
Not sure.
If we vote on them, all I'm saying, if we vote on them, if the region votes on them and says, these are our goals.
We approve them.
You approve them. The region approves these goals. These are our goals.
If they get modified, we'll have to reapprove them, right?
So.
Come on, let's get real here. Let's look at, looking at this in a systematic way. And I would suggest that the region is here, that there are four goals here. Select one, you know, three of those goals, or however many you want to select, and vote on them. And then let Amherst have that which is appropriate for them.
But then there's also Pelham.
And Pelham.
Okay, so we cannot talk about or make decisions or engage in discussion about activities for other committees. So we can look at the goals that Dr. Slaughter provided us, talk about how we feel about them. If we have a little bit more guidance, we can give them to him. He can speak with his other committees, come up with a final plan, and then we can vote on them. But we can't make decisions or talk about plans for other committees. Yep.
So, two things. Regarding math, I think the reason for that, more the, is just, again, well, let me start with the second part first. I'll come back to that, sorry. So what I attempted to do in putting these together was largely sort of make them so that they overlap nicely for all the committees. Obviously, there are aspects of these that are specific to region. I would suggest that if Amherst was to adopt a goal, or Pelham was to adopt a goal like that, they could ignore those parts because they don't apply. When we talk about grade seven to 12, that doesn't exist. So it's sort of moot by definition. At the same time, I also recognize that that may not be the direction the committees want to go, so I don't want to say that. But that plays into why math. And so part and parcel of that is that the elementary particulars we're in the second year of rolling out a new math curriculum, so it's pretty critical. We're also doing a tremendous amount of math and other subject alignment in the secondary, but just for, again, sort of an overlap kind of circumstance, the leveraging of the sort of math curriculum and alignment questions around mathematics is sort of consistent and aligned with where we are in process for all the districts in some ways. But, yeah, we could have picked the other, but I think it was just, it's in a good place to actually have noticeable progress during the course of the year.
Tillman?
Yeah, so thank you for adding the math topic. And what you said at the very end, I fully agree with. I think we're in a holding pattern a little bit, waiting for the next superintendent. But this is one area where progress can be made within a year, so I think it's important that it's there. And just from the perspective of Levert, I do think that all four goals, even though some of them are not immediately applicable to us, are good. And so I think that's a fine set.
Thank you. William?
I wanted to thank you for changing the fourth bullet, one, two, three, the fourth bullet on the goal number one. I appreciate that. And then on the last bullet, establishing a grade seven through 12 student advisory group, we were having discussions today at the meeting that I was at, and it doesn't sound like that's really going to be attainable. So I would hesitate to have that the way it's worded as a goal. I think maybe looking into how the students could be supported or how they could offer guidance, or how they could help with this process might be, could be. how they could offer guidance, or how they could help with this process might be, could be there, but I don't know if it's going to be an actual student advisory group from our schools. And so I think that the knowledge that I have from the last meeting I just went to today, that would be a total failure. And so I don't think that that would be fair, if I have that information for you to put something on there, that I know it doesn't sound like you'd be able to accomplish. So I would work on rephrasing that last bullet. And the way that you opened up the fourth bullet to make it more inclusive and open-ended, I would, I would advise you to do that for the last bullet. I think student involvement is, is really important, but it might look differently than student advisory group.
Thank you. Uh, Katie, and then Irv?
In terms of goal three, I'm curious about the need for it to be an actual goal. The way it's framed, it, it seems like it's a very logistical set of objectives, so I don't see it as a goal per se, because it's something that has to get done anyways. I'm wondering if we were to include an element of goal three that looks more at the transition from sixth to middle school in terms of capitalizing on this moment as a way to look at student retention, or a shift in culture, or something to address the, the retention issue between elementary and middle school, if that would make it a more robust goal. Because as I read it now, it just seems like a, a checklist of things that has to get done anyways. That would just be my feedback on that.
Alright.
Irv?
So I see one, two, and four as the goals that cross over into all of us, the region and Amherst. Goal number three really can be put off, because there's, the things that need to happen with that really aren't going to be getting underway in any kind of serious way until the next fiscal year, starting in July. That's when all of these issues will come to work. The interim, in terms of dealing with that now, is something that he would, could potentially start and not finish, and then we have to turn it over to the permanent. This is an issue that the per, permanent who's coming in is going to have to feel as an issue that is very serious. And it's not something that can be done between now and July one. But the other one, two, and, one, two, and four can be.
Roger?
I want to talk about goal three in a different way. Have to do it. You want to identify components of the Amherst regional agreement that need adjustment. And I, I see them here, and they seem somewhat perfunctory, you know, there are rules and laws. But what I would be interested in the superintending, superintendent engendering would be the change of culture that's going to take place in that school, because sixth graders are there. And I hear Irv's words, and, and I see it, and, and I can see it's in the future. But the movement to bring the sixth graders there, having been a sixth grade teacher for, never mind, it's really important, because some of the things that I got to read about, you know, the transition and those are the things, the human part of that movement are actually more important, because those are the kids. That's why we're here. So, these things are perfunctory, and the kids are not going to know about the change of relative and form of government. We got to take care of that. I got it. But also, what is that school going to look like for the kids involved? There are going to be some changes. And those are the kind of things I'm interested in. Okay, that's all.
Hold on. Gabrielle, did you have your hand up, or did I?
I did.
Did you want to say?
Yeah, yeah. Also, with respect to number three, even though the move to the middle school is going to be happening next fiscal year, this piece of identifying, well, okay, but the, the beginnings of those moves, most of that is going to be not between now and July. I see this goal, though, as simply identifying the components of the agreement that need adjustment. So that's, that's the main, like, if you take out all the other adjectives and pieces that are in there, the sentence says, identify components of the agreement that need adjustment. And I think that that certainly could begin this year and be part of what gets handed off to the permanent superintendent. Not that the changes relative to any of these things are going to be made, but identifying what aspects of that agreement need to be brought into our current situation, brought up to date. I don't see why that is a problem to leave where it is. I think that that, in fact, would be a, a, a good service to the incoming superintendent to make sure that that person, you know, has some things pointed out to them about what needs to already, you know, what, basically, they can hit the ground running on, on updating that agreement.
It was Jennifer, and then it's you.
So I think I was the one who asked to have the superintendent have a goal related to moving sixth graders to the middle school, because last year, the regional school committee voted to move sixth graders to the middle school starting in academic year twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-five, twenty-six.
They didn't, they didn't vote to do that. They postponed the vote. Look at your minutes.
Continue, Jennifer.
So, the school committee voted to delay moving sixth graders to the middle school to fall twenty-five or fall twenty-six. Sorry, I didn't, I said twenty-four. Fall twenty-five or fall twenty-six. So it won't be fall twenty-four, which, which, which is, makes sense. It wouldn't be fall twenty-four. So, that's what the school committee decided last, the this past February. So, um, ju, so, just, I, I just, I just want to take a minute to, just so that we're all grounded in the same information. The, the original plan to move Amherst sixth graders to the middle school was going to, was at that point going to result in not enrolling sixth graders at ARMS. It was going to involve having the sixth graders attend school in the middle school building, and they'd have to be in their own school, like a sixth grade academy, because they would not be enrolled in the middle school, because the middle school is a regional school district, and we can't just take sixth graders from another town without modifying the regional agreement. So the moving sixth graders to the middle school was just having them go to school in the building, but they would still be Amherst Elementary students. That's how, that's how we were looking at it for a while. Then, the former superintendent let us, because modifying a regional agreement was understood to be very cumbersome, we would have to open up the whole agreement and update many things in the agreement that are sorely out of date. The agreement's like fifty years old, I think, or more. But then, the previous superintendent got some guidance from Desi, that Desi would allow us to modify certain parts of the agreement without having to open up the whole agreement and fix everything that needed to be updated. And so then, the, the question became, can Amherst sixth graders be enrolled in ARMS? Which is a different thing from having sixth graders attend school in the middle school building, attend elementary school in the middle school building. So, the changes that would need to be made to the regional agreement, as I, as I just said, could just encompass that thing, but it's going to take a while. It's going to take like, I, it's not even this body, I don't think that does it. It's the, I, I don't know, I think it's the town, the town, the municipal government. So, it's going to take a while. There's going to be many people involved, so I, that, I, that's why I thought that it would be good to start that research process now to figure out what would be involved in changing the regional agreement to allow Amherst sixth graders to be enrolled in the middle school. And so I do, I, I, I mean, I take Katie's point, like, maybe it doesn't have to be a goal, it's just a task, but I think it's important enough, and to Gabrielle's point, it can start now. I think Doug, I think it would be appropriate for Doug to start that research now to figure out what would it need to look like to modify the regional agreement to allow sixth graders to attend, be enrolled in ARMS.
Irv?
There are serious issues involved with this move. The previous superintendent came forth in that last meeting, and when, when we talked about this move, and why he wanted not to do it, and that's why we had postponed the vote. There are serious issues that cannot be dealt with in the next few months. What we do know is that the sixth grade has to move to the middle school once the new school building is completed. Now, the new school building completion date is somewhere in twenty-five, twenty-six, maybe twenty-seven. Bids haven't even gone out yet, but given the three-year process. So, if it's a three-year process for the building, and let's say the building starts next fall, alright, that's twenty-eight, three years before. So why is it? Why is it that we want to deal with this now, when there are, these, these are serious issues? There are physical conditions related to the middle school that have to be dealt with. Alright, that, that implies mona, money and budgetary concerns. Alright, those budgetary concerns that need to be taken care of and handled is something that, right now, we do not want to touch until the next fiscal year. After, you know, in, in terms of July, and July, July one, when we get ready to go into the next, next fiscal year. I don't, I do not wish to have those budget issues come during this, this fiscal round. If other people think that's, that's appropriate, I do not think it's appropriate, because the costs are unknown. Are unknown in terms of the physical, physical condition of that building. As A, B, we do not know how long it's going to take, and, and, and what needs to be done in relationship to the regional agreement. So, I, I think it's, you know, why go through that now, when we can look at one, two, and four, that which is doable now?
Tillman?
Irv, thank you for articulating the complexity and difficulty of that move, and because of that, I think I wholeheartedly agree with Gabrielle's point, that this should be something that our current interim superintendent, who has expertise in this area and has been around for a long time, can certainly prepare, so that when that, that discussion comes up, whenever it is, the next superintendent is prepared.
I, I'm going to say I agree with Tillman on that one. I think starting this, is, which is, to me, I'm reading this goal as research and information gathering, not start doing things. Like this is about knowing, this, I, my feeling is that this is going to be a very large topic that takes up a lot of people's time and effort and energy, and the more information we can have before starting that process, I think is better, and especially because we have a lovely superintendent right now that is a very good finance director, that we can, you know, play to our, our assets. Um, I think-
I just want to say, I retract what I said, not about kids and how important they are, but the complexity, I did not realize it. So I thank you again, Irv, and thank you Tillman for jumping on that. Thank you.
I think Anna was next.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to sort of give my support for the preparation. This is really just about doing some background research, trying to figure out what will need to be addressed, and not necessarily addressing anything at this point, but just saying like, oh, this article is out of date, this article is out of date, this article needs to be modified, but not actually doing the modification, just like, you know, taking a highlighter and saying, this needs to be fixed, this needs to be fixed, this needs to be fixed, and getting some of that done, so that when the next superintendent comes in, they can say, okay, these are, these are my to-do lists. This is what I'm going to have to do over the next three or four years. I have to, and thank you for showing me what I need to do.
Uh, Irv?
So, can we prioritize these goals in terms of ones we would like to see as priorities for the interim superintendent to deal with? And, and then, once we've prioritized them, then we can go, then, then we can go from there. And, and by prioritizing, it doesn't mean that the the region is, is, is necessarily saying that this, these are how it's going to be, but these are our priorities. I, I would like to be able to see it as priorities, and prioritize now, which would then give us a way of moving past this issue of, you know, goal number three, which, which I obviously don't see as something that should be dealt with at this point in time. There's only so many hours and days in, in, to go, that Doug has to deal with things. I would want him to prioritize his time, that which can be used more effectively and efficiently on those issues that are right now before us, one, two, and four.
Jennifer?
I, I just wanted to, to correct one thing, which is that, um, the construction on the new building is going to begin in twenty-four, and it's going to be open by fall of twenty-six. Not twenty-seven or twenty-eight, but fall of twenty-six.
I don't want to lay money on that.
That is the current plan.
I know it is. Not going to happen.
Fall of twenty-six.
We're going to start in twenty-four? And we haven't even gone out the bid yet.
They're starting in March of twenty-four.
Yeah, and be done in two years.
Uh, William?
I was just going to say that as a representative from Pelham, I, I think that the, as, on the region, on the region, as a rep, I'm here as a representative from Pelham, on the region. So I, that, that's what I'm saying. I, I think that it, like, there's all different possibilities, and kids could, like, if it's, what I hear is that it's sixth grade from the Amherst Elementary that's moving. If we're having this as a, as a goal, I think looking at possibilities of what other schools may or may not want, or what other families may or may not want, and what would the options look like? I, I think that would, like, long-term, it would be nice to, to, for that goal to be a little expanded and, and have maybe some explorative thoughts on what it could look like, what it might look like, what it couldn't look like, while he's going through those policies, you know?
For the feeder schools.
For the, well, for the region. If, if, if the, if sixth grade from Amherst is being absorbed into Amherst Regional Middle School, then what would be the possibilities of other schools, or other towns that are in the Amherst Regional School District, for them to possibly have their students, or not have their students, in sixth grade coming?
So, my recollection from when we voted on this item two years ago, three years ago, was that the region said, we will accept any, like, sixth graders from any feeding district, as, as this plan was designed, from the region. How it turns out, either as a regional agreement, or Amherst Sixth Grade Academy within the middle school, those pieces haven't been configured.
Right, yeah, no, I get that. I was just saying, maybe looking at what the options, what the, what they could be, what it could look like. Because we don't know really if it's going to be a, a sixth grade school within itself, or if it's going to be part of the region, and I would assume that 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 would be expl, be explored upon about if it's going to, if it's possible for it, for the kids to be absorbed into the region, or if it's going to be a separate entity within the school, as Jen stated earlier.
Uh, Anna?
I was just going to say, when this came up initially, I think Pelham and Leverett and Chutesbury all had their own discussion, and they're like, no, we're not sending our sixth graders to the middle school. I don't care what format it is, we're not sending our sixth graders to the middle school. They want to keep their sixth graders in the elementary school, so
But it could be explored, right.
It may change, but-
Opinions may change.
At the current situation is, everyone's like, no, we're not doing that. So, it might be something to bring back to the Pelham School Committee.
Tillman?
Coming back to the goals.
Yes, thank you.
If there is limited time in the day, as Irv points out, and Doug has much to do, I think one, two, and four are the most important ones, because they have immediate impact on the students. For the third one, he's hopefully going to be around in, you know, when the next superintendent is here, so he can help them.
Okay, Katie?
I did have a question about goal two, in terms of where that comes from, because I, again, I'm, I'm unclear as to why it's a goal, when you are doing it anyways as part of your job. And Well, we would have an endless list of things he does then. No, I guess I, then maybe I'm unclear on the idea of a goal, but for me, again, goals are derived from the district improvement plan, or similar areas of need, right? And they're, they're developed to address a particular need. So, I don't, I don't see goal two as necessarily needing explicit. If, if we're looking to prioritize, like, one- If we're looking to prioritize, like, one to me, obviously. Three, you know, it's clear this is gonna creep up on us in no time, so three, I would also prioritize.
So I'll speak to number two. I think because, you know, expectation at current is that fiscal twenty-five will be a pretty difficult budget year. So it's less about preparing a budget as it is about the conversations with you and the community about how we make the choices within that budget. So it's really about that part, the communication and liaising with public and board to make sure that that process is as transparent and as engaged as possible, because it's gonna be complex. And anytime we deal, particularly at the regional level, but this true at all three districts, but particularly at the regional level, because four towns are involved, and therefore towns' budgets are involved, and the impact on those, so it's important to kind of keep that coordination and communication going. So it's really, you know, I think the communication is the bigger piece in some respects relative to this. Yeah, it is, you know, it is routine that we, well, and required that we have to put a budget together, so there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that part of it. It's really more about the process of getting that budget done, and especially given it's entirely likely that we're gonna have a pretty tricky year and have some hard choices to make.
Thank you for the clarification. Gabriela.
I wanna thank Katie for pointing out that this is, at least it sounds on the surface like something that would be a normal part of your activities. And thanks for pointing out that there are some enhancements that you're hoping to do because of that particular difficulty of that budget year. And I wonder if it may be wording it in such a way, like, enhancing the communication and collaboration for the preparation of budget year, fiscal budget year twenty-five, so that it sounds more like we are focusing on enhancing the communication side of it, rather than just, you know, the preparation of the budget for that particular year. Otherwise, yes, it does sound a little bit like, you know, you're listing something that you're going to be doing anyway. And along with that comment, I have a question. Is that in fact something you're going to be doing in a way that's different from previous budget years? The communication and collaboration pieces? Are you envisioning it to be a more enhanced process?
I think it'll be necessary to be. In others, we'll probably have more meetings, to be perfectly honest, and more kind of meetings. So I think the, for the regional school district, you know, the budget subcommittee will probably wanna delve into it, you know, how you go about engaging community, getting feedback about what we wanna fund, what we can let go of, you know. I mean, we'll, as administrative staff and bringing it forward to you, have our suggestions. And usually when you say, all right, we're gonna have to eliminate X, Y, and Z, then immediately everybody that loves X, Y, and Z shows up, which is understandable, right? And so then it's, then it's, a part of that conversation is about, well, if we keep X, Y, and Z, then what are, what's A, B, and C that's gonna need to be removed, and what's that conversation like? So I think it's entirely likely we'll have to have, you know, more sessions of information for folks, you know, both just basics of how things work and how they fit together, and also opportunities for conversation about the choices that are gonna have to ultimately be made. And so I think that's, that's where it gets enhanced. It's really, you know, sort of more opportunity for conversation than, you know, if you have an easy year that doesn't have, you know, it's like, well, what do we wanna add? That's usually a much easier conversation and doesn't require as much effort, but, so that's how I see it.
Erv?
You're correct in that these are, these goals really are part and parcel of the budget-making process in and of itself. So the budget-making process, obviously, he collaborates with the school committee to host forums. That is, has always been a part of our budget-making process. Same thing for communicating the budget process and decisions to the public and making public awareness. That's a part of our budget-making process. And the third thing, engaging municipal leaders from all four communities, we always have a four-towns meeting. That is always a part of the budget-making process. But it's the carrying out of those things and preparing for them and ensuring that they take place that is a priority for the superintendent to concentrate upon.
Do you feel like you, do you feel like you have enough feedback from us? Do you need?
No, I appreciate the comments and the suggestions, and so I'll take that back and rework these a little bit, add some to it. Obviously, if individuals have additional sort of phrasing or comments, you know, send them to me directly, that's fine. I'll take and accept that, and we'll, you know, keep iterating through.
Great, thank you. All right.
I have no idea what that means. I thought we were going to be looking at goals for him and that we were gonna be prioritizing goals, and now it's coming back to him looking at and refining what he gave us, and then bringing it back to us to discuss again. Is that correct? Am I summarizing that correctly? All right, I mean, obviously, that's something that if that were gonna be the goal of this conversation, it would have been a lot more efficient and effective if we would have stated that in the beginning.
Noted. So next up is, back to you, first quarter budget.
So I did rework this upon suggestion of a member, you know, and I'd noticed this years ago and not made any changes because it's mostly a really tedious process to do this, but for whatever reason, the the way in which we present the budgets and the expense categories and the budget areas in our budget is slightly different than had it been done in our quarterly reports. I was reflecting on that a little bit. I think that the quarterly reports were probably modified over the years based on feedback from the school committee about what they wanted to see, and yet I think it makes it harder to tie back, as was the point made, so that's fine. It, you know, took a little bit to put it sort of back together in the way that, you know, that it has the same sort of category names there. But the narrative of what's below is actually really the same as what you would have gotten to a couple of weeks ago when we last met, and we talked about this. And the short story is, but it's okay at the present time, here at the end of the first quarter, there are a couple of areas, particularly in facilities and in special education, that we're gonna need to keep a really close eye on or make some modifications. I mean, what we're really seeing is, in special education, is it's really more encumbrances or projected spending. And part of that is if we have staff that we haven't necessarily found or placed, you know, or hired those positions, we have to contract for some of those services so that we can provide them in the immediate. We basically budget as if we're not gonna be able to, or we plan and we encumber as if we're not gonna hire that position for the whole year. So it might be an overstatement of where we are, but it's also maybe what it's really gonna cost us. But at the same time, we'll have savings in the salaries line above that we ultimately will ask you to move to help support that budget. Nonetheless, I think I'm still concerned about what those numbers look like right now, regardless of that, but I think that it will moderate. But we're gonna, you know, part of why I marked it with a red square is that it's gonna need some things to be adjusted there and some additional modifications, either in what we have encumbered and how closely we watch that, what our real expenses turn out to be, and how quickly can we make those adjustments and have a sense of its impact on our overall budget, and and what other resources we might draw in from other areas in the budget to help support that area. I think in our, in our facilities section of the budget, you know, we're a little ahead of where we wanna be spending-wise. I mentioned this, so one of the pieces that's hitting that budget in particular that was unplanned for was a change in our trash removal. We formally hired the town of Amherst to do it for us. They had a large dump truck that, you know, or trash truck that would come and pick up our trash, and they informed us kind of after the budget process, and this is no fault or blame on those folks at all, that their truck was dying and they weren't gonna be able to replace it, and so they were gonna stop doing their own trash service. So we were, we were in circumstance where, and, you know, again, I don't think that was, it was not planned or malicious in any way. It put the town of Amherst in a bind as well. I think their, you know, like, Town Hall had to, you know, contract out for the service as well, and so that wasn't in their budget either. And so I think there's a couple of pieces here. One is to purchase dumpsters, and then, you know, the, what a commercial contracting company that hauls trash charges is more than what we were paying the town of Amherst, which is not surprising, and that's a piece of what's happening to us there. We have a fair number of encumbrances for other things that we, you know, routinely use, you know, in consular supplies and that sort of thing. There's also some encumbrances in anticipation of need. We have an open plumbing position, which we haven't been able to hire for a little while. And so, you know, we've got that salary sitting in our salary section not being spent, and yet we need to be able to respond to circumstances as they arise around plumbing issues that are more urgent or emergent. So we have money encumbered for that purpose. They may not be materialized over the course of the year, but it's gonna be an area we're gonna have to watch closely. And that's an example of an encumbrance that we have so that we're prepared and can call on plumbing companies to come and help us out. So that has us in a larger area of encumbrance in that, in that section of the budget. Again, I think we're gonna have to watch closely as the year progresses. We might be able to free up those encumbered funds if we're realizing we're not gonna need that kind of coverage for those things as we realize, you know, we won't need to buy as much in supplies, or we may have to make that choice. In other words, we may have to be more conservative in our approach about consular supplies or maintenance, you know, supplies, that kind of thing. So we will keep a close eye on it, again, that's why I marked it in yellow. You know, just to speak to salaries a little bit, we're in good shape on salaries at the moment. We're probably a little under budget in that regard, which is expected. There's some, you know, some things, like I said, there's some positions we know we haven't hired yet. There's delays in some of the hiring. We've hired people as the year's gone along. So that's, you know, that is a resource we'll be able to lean into as we get further along in the budget. Quarters two and three are where we really dig in closely and start to find out whether, you know, what we're seeing in, say, special education or facilities or any other area is really requiring us to take a more, you know, sort of drastic action relative to our budget. We'll see how that plays out over the next month or so, and, you know, when I come back to you in the early part of the year, and we talk about quarter two, which is the end of December, you know, we'll probably, in the latter part of January, if possible, probably try to get back to you and show you where we sit at that point, and whether we need to make certain decisions about how we progress through the rest of the year. But short story at the moment, there's some areas where we've got some concern. Overall, the budget's okay, a little higher than I'd like it, at twenty-six point eight overall, but I think there's some encumbrances in anticipation that may be, you know, driven by a conservative approach by staff to make sure that they can take action in a quick way. If they've got an encumber, they can take action more quickly if they need to.
Katie.
Thank you so much, Doug, for reworking it so that it is an easier read. That's really helpful, and I hope going forward with quarter two, quarter three, quarter four, we can follow this outline, the system. In terms of the special education line item, I'm curious whether it's something we're privy to as regional members, or I think there's a subcommittee as well, right? When something is over to that level, would it be possible to break that down to a more specific, explicit line item by line item? And the reason why I ask is, I'm just thinking basic home economics, like, when something's off in the household, I wanna know exactly where it came from and why. And I think, like, the one-twenty-six percent at the end of quarter one, it makes me wanna know more information. And I can't speak for everyone, but I would hope people have a similar feeling in terms of what exactly is happening. My other second question, in terms of salaries, or, I'm not sure where it falls, but in terms of the payments that we are paying out to former superintendent and assistant superintendent, where is that reflected in the budget?
So I have a second question first, that's in the salary section.
Okay.
So all those are reflected in the expense line up there at the top. You know, this is through the end of September, so depending on when payments were made and which payments are being made and how they're being made, some are, some things like that are done in a lump sum, and then some things are done in a regular basis as regular salaries are paid as well, so. But they are definitely gonna hit that salaries area of the budget, and they'll continue to do that. Back to your first question, I can tell you what's going on in special education. Well, first thing I'll point out is, number one, is that the actual, and let me see if I can scroll this a little bit so you can see the headers a little bit better. So the header that says year-to-date expenses, that's actually cash out the door. So for special education, that's at two oh three versus a little over a million, so we're at twenty percent spending at this point. That's higher than I'd like to see at this point in the year, but at the same time, the actual cash out the door at the end of the first quarter being at twenty percent. The thing to keep in mind with that spending is that when we offer summer programs, a lot of them have to do with special education, and so that's July and August. So that's part of the first quarter. So our actual spending's at about twenty percent or so. Like I said, that's a little higher than I'd like us to be at this point, because most of our spending happens during the sort of ten months that we have school, but at the same time, that's our actual. The encumbrance of, you know, one million, one seventy-nine, I can tell you where that is. It's transportation for kids that have special education needs, whether it be, you know, to out-of-district placements, or even within districts sometimes, or that sort of thing. You know, when we are able to do transportation, so, you know, we bring a, you know, kid within one of our buildings that, you know, or we're able to take kids to an out-of-district replacement, that kind of thing, it's a lot less expensive, but we have a limited capacity there. We can do a little bit of it, not a ton of it, so transportation's a piece. The other is in a broadly grouped line called contracted services. So contracted services, examples of OT, PT, speech-language pathologists if we don't have them. And we provide a lot of those services ourselves, we just can't always do all of it. If we have particular needs for BCBA, which is board-certified behavioral, oh, I don't think it's analyst, but maybe it's analyst, I'm forgetting, I have this written down, but anyway. Psych services, and again, these are, sometimes they're open positions, sometimes they're specific things we can't do. So sometimes we need, and we had in our budget for a few years, and we decided to pull out because we just couldn't fill it, a bilingual psychologist, so that they could do Spanish language evaluations of kids, so some of that's the kind of thing. So most of what we're seeing there is coverage for positions we can't fill. There are often, you know, sophisticated sort of staff needs in that regard, not exclusively. There are times we've not been able to hire all the pair of professionals we need to do. Some of them have particular skills that we don't have. More often, it's teaching or other unit A or professional staff that we're trying to provide and, that we're required to provide by virtue of the placements and IPs and evaluations that we're doing. And we just don't have quite the staff to do it, and we're trying to get that work done. So that's a lion's share of where that sits. Most of the rest are budget around things like curriculum materials and technology equipment, and that sort of stuff is fine. It's really that, you know, trying to cover those things we can't get to or do. And we always have some of that, you know, naturally, we, there's some levels of expertise and sophistication of service we need that we're always gonna contract out, but we're ahead of our schedule on some of that.
So just, thank you, that's really helpful. In terms of quarter two, because July and August wouldn't be factored in, would we assume it would not be that high again?
So, well, so when we do quarter two, it's all of one and two that we'll report, so it'll be year-to-date. So it'll include July and August, September, October, November, and December. So it will be that, what we would hope is exactly that, is that if we're monitoring our budget closely, and that's part of, you know, the business office and what we'll be asking, you know, my staff to do and myself to do in coordinating with our special education folks, is to say, are there any of these things that you haven't covered you can let go? So circumstances change. You might have, you know, we might have a placement with a kid, and we're anticipating they stay at that placement all year, and circumstances change for the better, and they're able to maybe go to summit, and that's a much less expensive placement for us, and suddenly we disencumber that money, and suddenly that number gets a lot better. You know, there may be, you know, a grant that comes online, that sort of thing. So I'm hopeful that, I mean, you know, that we, it doesn't stay at one-twenty-five the entirety of the year. I'm hoping we start to disencumber, and we, you know, we'll probably see more of that at quarter three, but, you know, given where we're sitting. at quarter three, but, you know, given where we're sitting right now, we're going to sort of press those questions on quarter, you know, in and around quarter two, say, hey, is there anything we can kind of close down and and release? Because, you know, we don't want to tie that money up and and panic, you know, and and alter how we approach the rest of our budget, because that's going to, you know, that's going to drive how we choose to do the rest of the things we do in all the other areas of the budget if we if we stay at that kind of level.
Tell me.
Thanks.
I have a question about the health insurance employees and other insurance and benefits, which are fifty and seventy seven percent. I I would have expected that they're roughly proportional to salaries, because I would expect them to be handled like a fringe. Any reason why they're so high with actual expenses already?
So I think that what what you'd say with regard to, like, other insurance and benefits at seventy seven percent, so one of those things is is our retirement assessment, and we pay all of that upfront in July, so we pay the entirety of it right out of the box. Health insurance at fifty percent, that's probably a little over overstatement, but it does, there are aspects of that 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 we carry a little more of earlier in the year, so I think that that's, you know, that's a little ahead of schedule, but not wildly ahead of schedule, because we do have some sort of front payment of that 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 kicks in there as well.
Thank you.
Erv, do you still have your hand up?
Yes, I still have my hand up. But what is impressive about all of this, there are some impressive things here, but you've answered those questions, hundred and twenty five percent, ninety six percent, and seventy seven percent, those are, that's impressive to me, and not in a good way. The but also what is impressive in a really good way to me is the contingency and reserves That is impressive.
Yeah.
At quarter one, that that it's it's where it is.
Right.
Four thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
Right.
Out of that number of nine hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars.
Right.
That's impressive.
Yeah, and and what I'll say is this is in contingency and reserves is, you know, there's some odds and ends that we have that are unusual sort of pieces of of budget, but a big piece of that is 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 we had not finished negotiations with with our unions when we budgeted this, and so that's, you know, held a placeholder of dollars available that that, you know, is expected to be needed in our in our salary section. And, you know, as we go through quarter two, it'll start to show up a bit more, and so, you know, that may be an area where we're we're going to leverage some of those resources to 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 bring to bear in salaries, but it may prove that if if, you know, that we need to leverage it in other parts of the budget. So it's it's to date, we've not needed it, as you can see, like I said, you know, the the salary section of our budget is holding in in pretty good shape, if anything, just a little below what we'd expected at the end of the first quarter. So that's that's good news, because if if, you know, all that were projected were were being expended and and, you know, that would that percentage would probably be sitting higher than expected because the reality of where the budgets actually, I mean, not the budgets, but the contracts actually landed was 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 not where our our budget was targeted. So that's that would, you know, cause us to need to leverage that contingency and reserve for for ultimately, you know, funding that section. We'll see how it plays out in quarter two and and quarter three, but I'm hoping that that stays as is, because that'll make, you know, managing the rest of the budget a whole lot easier.
Gabriella.
What is the last item under expense accounts, additions and reductions? It's a negative number.
It is a negative number. So that's the simplest way to put it is other resources we're going to bring to bear. So when we budgeted, we did, you know, sort of adds it, we often call it adds and cuts. I like using the word reductions better, because it can be, you know, it's not necessarily cut. Sometimes it's it's a cost avoidance as opposed to an actual cut of a service or or something performed. So when we budgeted, we had an anticipated use of of over a million dollars in in S R funds. We have S R grant funds that are still available to us, and and we'll we'll use those, and we had about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in what we anticipated would be savings of of other types, some of which are like staff turnover. We did reduce the number of staff, you know, the what's not here, we'll see, you know, the number of positions was reduced by about fourteen and a half, roughly, fourteen point four, I think, was the official sort of reduction in numbers of staff. So there are other things that come with those reductions in staff, so some of them have health insurance, and so that's that shrinks our health insurance number, and so we make an estimate of what we think those kinds of reductions, you know, separate from just raw salary, there's some other reductions that kind of come with that. And so that, in part and parcel with with the the funding from our S R grant, are are supporting the budget. So essentially, that's revenue from other sources, some of which are cost avoidance, and some are actual dollars that we're going to push in to various points in the budget from our from our S R resources. So it's kind of the the key key thing to think about is that's one-time money that won't be there in next year's budget.
Okay, thank you. So student activities and possible vote.
Point of order.
Oh, yeah.
You've exceeded two and a half hours.
Thank you. Okay. So I will make a motion that we extend our meeting for another thirty minutes.
Second.
All in favor, thirty minutes? All opposed? Abstaining? Abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay. Thank you. So we pass eight to zero to one.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. So as noted in the memo, and and we should do this every year, it'd be lovely to have done this about a month or two ago, but that's, you know, sort of where we are. It's recommendation that we actually have you approve all student activity organizations for both middle school and high school each year. They don't change a lot from year to year, there's a few new ones that that come up. There's some that also get retired. We'll come back to you with with that, if there are some organizations that we can can, you know, sort of retire the the interest or whatever has changed, that sort of thing. What's more critical when we do that is it is if there's any residual funding left over and what we do with that. The key thing to keep in mind about student activities is the following, it is student-generated for student use. So for those of you signing warrants, you will occasionally see transfers, so when we want to move money from the savings account, which is where most of it sits, to checking, which is where it's available for the students to to say, hey, we want to buy the the group T-shirts, or we want to have pizza this week for our our club, you know, then, or we want to donate it, if they choose to to donate it. So sometimes they'll do fundraisers to raise money to provide menstrual products to the survival center, or whatever it is. But it's student, you know, student raised money for student purpose and student use. So that's the key thing. The main thing you guys are doing is saying, yes, we approve of these clubs and and their their purpose. We have a wide variety of different clubs. And, you know, I always encourage them, whether they want to raise money or not, that they put themselves on the list, because then they can. And that way, if if somebody wants to donate to them, then they have an account set up in our student activities bookkeeping that is allows for that and and then gives them a resource to do do what they do. And so what you'll see here is, and I'll scroll through it, is a variety of clubs that that are in in place. The newest ones, we've, I've added a little bit, I've I've asked the our student activities bookkeeper, clerical support, to to give us a little bit of a description of what those those new clubs are doing. Obviously, if you have any questions, I I don't know the answer to that for all of the clubs, but I know some of them, I can try to answer it, but we can also get answers. So if you want to know what the Amage American Association Club does, I'll find out. I don't know. It's, you know, there's sort of affinity groups, you know, opportunities and and places for for kids to get together with 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 common interests and spend time, and and these are advised by by faculty and staff, and they meet on a routine basis. What I will also point out, at the bottom of the high school list, is is a series of sports listings. So while athletics has an external group, the Amherst Hurricane Boosters, that's a separate standalone, like a P G O, it's its own financial entity, the students can raise their own money and use it for their their sports. So each of the sports basically has their own internal student activities account, so they can raise funds, and they often pay for things like senior night, or, you know, the seniors all, or the team wants to get, you know, a special T-shirt, shorts, or whatever, they can do that kind of thing. So that's why those are listed, and they're all listed together, because they, in the accounting system, they kind of sit together. At the mid, at the at the middle school, the one thing you'll see that's a little difference class of twenty twenty nine, so seventh grade's coming in, they're the, you know, the the new group, and so what we do is we set this up, they they do fundraising, they do social activities and that sort of stuff in middle school, you know, they do ice cream socials, they have dance, they do all that sort of stuff. They fundraise for that, they do field trips sometimes, but then when they transition to high school, then they start doing fundraising for things like prom and those kinds of things. So we set it up in seventh grade, and it kind of carries through the rest of the the secondary for them. And again, you see sports, they're kind of commingled in here a little bit, there's not quite as many sports, and some of those, you know, we may not have them currently, but it it it's still a club activity that that has some some resources available, and and so we want to make sure to list them in case there needs to be action relative to those. But again, a lot of different ways for kids to engage and and interact with each other in in affinity groups and interest groups and and do a lot of learning, and, you know, that's co-curricular is the term that often gets used instead of extracurricular, so I like to think about it that way. So I'll answer any questions people have, and then, you know, the the motion's pretty It's just to, you know, accept them as as valid student activity organizations. But I'll take questions.
Tell me.
I was going to make a motion.
Oh.
Yes, would you please?
Okay, I move to approve the student activity organizations as presented in the memo from the finance director dated eleven one twenty three.
Second.
Second.
I'll give it to Jennifer. All in favor?
Discussion.
Just got it. Yep, apologies.
Can I have a quick question?
Yep, Anna.
There was someone who wrote in about track at the middle school, and she was, that person was very, just.
Is that the one about the turf?
Oh, indoor, oh.
It was winter track.
Winter track, okay. Okay. But there is track, okay.
Yeah.
All right. William?
I was just going to say that it is interesting that we're having all these L G B T Q I issues that have been brought forward. There's one club for the high school, kind of. There's not one for the middle school. I just think that's interesting. I don't understand that. There's lots of national clubs. Do we not have faculty that are stepping up to support the clubs, or is it all student-led and the students are choosing these clubs, like what's?
So I think the other thing is they may have decided they don't need to do any fundraising. And so, for example, there's a there's a group that the middle school has called Posh, which at the high school level, they've been, it's a new one, but it was at at the middle school last year. They're not listed here. It could be an oversight on my part that I missed one, so if I missed any in the, you know, I'll share this with our.
No, it's here.
Our bookkeeper. It's at the secondary, but it's in the, is it in the, the middle school as well?
No.
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 I know they're still meeting, because they've still got their signs up, so it may be that they've they felt they didn't need to to raise funds, which is funny.
It's in the notes.
Oh.
In the description.
Okay. Is that the high school one, or is that the?
That's the high school.
That's the high school one, I think.
It's high school.
So the high school, so it was a group that started last year in the middle school, and some of the kids were eighth graders, and so they went to the high school, so they wanted to start the same group there. And so there so there could be groups that meet and organizations that meet but don't have the interest in any fundraising or any need to fundraise, and so that could be a piece of it, too. And again, if I've missed them, I'm, you know, incredibly sorry, but.
Who puts these clubs forward? Is it the students, or is it the faculty?
I'd say yes. A little bit of both. I mean, sometimes it's a faculty member that has a strong interest, and they sort of present that as as a as an area of, you know, are any kids interested, and kids go, oh, yeah, I'd like to do that. And then sometimes they're student-led, so students go, hey, we'd like to start a group that does this, and so it's a little bit of both. You know, and 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 so there's, you know, that's part of why I think you see some some that have, you know, kind of traditional look to them, they've been around forever, and then there's others that have, you know, pretty unique and focused titles and and interests.
Gabriella.
Are there potentially some listed on here that are just here because they were approved at some point and they've never been taken off, or does this get updated to represent those that are actively meeting, actively exist?
So the goal is to have all the ones that are actively meeting, but there definitely could be some that have not, but may have included them, you know, so it's.
So so there is some effort to keep it up to date.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And I and I will probably, one of the things we haven't done in a few years, but I'd like to come back and hopefully we'll be able to this year, is finding those that are truly not meeting anymore, and particularly if they have a balance, because that money's not doing any students any good, but we'll have to have a conversation about, well, what do we do with that? We can't spend on faculty, we can't buy them all lunch. We really need to spend it on the students and how to do that in a way that's meaningful and and appropriate. And so there's, you know, there are times that, you know, we'll use it and hold it for for supporting field trips for kids, you know, a field trip where kids or families might need some support in 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 going on field trips, we could do a little bit of that as a general rule of thumb, and and then we may just say, we're going to divide it, you know, there's twenty eight clubs, and we divide it by twenty, and everybody gets a dollar thirty seven, or whatever it works out to be. It's not, it's more than that. I think there's a fair amount of 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 resource that that is sort of sitting with, you know, some of them have, I kid you not, there's like ninety eight cents in a couple of these accounts, right? You know, and we got to keep track of it, and it's like, all right, I'm going to put that away. But there are others that have more significant amounts of funds. With this, with the classes, the class of, pick the number, we're always endeavoring as they graduate for them to then request and take their money with them, and they tend to use it for things like reunions and that sort of thing, but it's their money to take. And the tricky thing is, they have to go and set up a bank account, and, you know, they're all like, just barely eighteen, and so doing that in a way that, you know, it requires some nuance, you know, and 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 there's a couple of different ways to do it. It's difficult, they're not usually likely to set up, you know, their own five oh one C three and become a nonprofit and that sort of thing. So it is, you know, the class has to decide, do we entrust, you know, an individual to put their social security number on this account for the entire class of twenty twenty four, or whatever it is? And so we often, you know, as as stewards of that money, we can't just, you know, cut a check to John Smith to go take it to the bank unless we have some reasonable proof that it's set up in a way that makes that is meaningful and appropriate for that. So that sometimes hangs up some classes more than others, depending on who who those officers are in the class. And I will say this, during the pandemic, a couple of classes, you know, like my daughter's class of twenty twenty, they didn't have a prom, they had a ton of money left over. I mean, not like, you know, not like ten thousand dollars, but, you know, they had a couple thousand dollars, you know, three thousand dollars or something like that. So sometimes they'll give to the, you know, to the younger classes and get them sort of seed money to do their proms and that sort of stuff, but, you know, there's a different different approaches there, but try to keep it up to date. We will come back and and try to resolve the the sort of, you know, I don't want to say dead accounts, but the the dormant clubs and and resolve that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions ready for a vote? All those in favor of the proposed motion? Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Future agenda planning. Jennifer?
I'd like to request a future agenda item for this committee to discuss creating a subcommittee to review the report that we jointly reviewed and used at our October eleventh executive session for the purpose of, a subcommittee for the purpose of coming up with recommendations on actions the school committee could take. And I also want to ask, I don't know if this is an agenda item, or if Doug could include it in your in your superintendent's report, an update on backfilling the finance director responsibilities? Because I note that the memo we just voted on says, from Douglas Lauder, finance director slash interim superintendent, but I mean, we're aware that your interim superintendent contract says that you're on leave from the finance director role, so I'm worried that you're doing two jobs and and shouldn't be or don't have to be. So I would love to get an update on the finance director position, as well as the middle school principal search, if we could get an update on where that stands. Thank you.
Anna?
My memory is that we decided the policy committee was going to take on the job of reviewing the report, making policy recommendations. of reviewing the report, making policy recommendations.
That was my suggestion. Jennifer?
I believe that was the meeting that we ended up ending, cutting short and I don't think we fully discussed it, so that could be something that comes out of it. I don't think it was officially decided.
Okay. Anything else? Uh, Katie?
I'm just going to reiterate and I've sent emails about it too, but again, an update on the LGBTQIA professional development, people to come and speak about what's happening.
Gabriella? I'd like an item where we hear specific actions that have taken place already in response to the occurrences at the middle school from spring. So I know that there are specific procedural and/or just changes that have been made and I, I'd just like to get those enumerated.
Thank you. Anna?
Can we get, also get another update on the track and field, RFP?
No, I can't tell, I'll just tell it really quick. So proposals were due today, so we did gather them and we have, you know, qualified proposers of, of that. Obviously, I haven't looked at them, we're going to go through the process of, of evaluating those proposals, so I will just tell you that today was the closing day for those proposals to be due. We did receive some that seemed to be qualified in their form, so literally over the next couple of weeks, we're going to be digging into that and, and I'll have much more soon.
Tell me.
A suggestion for the structure of the agenda, and if you can move to public comments as early as is feasible, that I think would be respectful of the public.
I was just going to say, I would like to piggyback on what Katie said with the LGBTQI plus update and maybe bringing in some people that are involved in that to kind of give us an overview of what's going on. And then an update like on the restorative justice, how that is working into the LGBTQI stuff or bullying or whatever, just an update on all of that, I guess. The bullying and the LGBTQ.
Anything else? All right. Warrant report?
I didn't receive any.
So I just signed some, but I apologize, I was assuming that William was going to be signing them and I was just a backup and so when I saw them, I.
And I didn't receive any.
We got to reverse then.
Yeah.
We send them to you instead of him, so I can get that twitched.
But, but I, I went ahead and signed some.
No, that's perfectly fine. It's okay. If you've got them, you can read them, but if you don't want to, you know.
I have them, I, I can't seem to see them anymore after I signed them, so.
We can read them next time.
Yeah.
All right. It does not look like we have any gifts. I will entertain a motion.
I move for adjourn.
So, William, oh, Gabriella, sorry. No discussion, all in favor of adjourning? We are adjourned? Thank you.